Thank you, Madam President. On your call.
They're waiting on you guys.
This meeting is hereby called to order Trenton City Council meeting Thursday, July the 11th, 5:30 a.m. Let us please stand for the flags. Luke?
Aye. The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public laws, 1975, Chapter 231. This agenda is complete to the extent known and was sent to the Trenton Times and the Trentonian newspapers, posted on the first-floor bulletin board in City Hall, filed in the city clerk's office, and posted on the City of Trenton website. Formal action will be taken. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. Role call. Councilwoman Edwards. For the record, Councilwoman Edwards has already emailed to notify that she will be late this evening, but she will be here. Vice President Figaro Kenberg has done same. She will be here momentarily. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Presente.
Councilman Harrison?
Present.
Councilwoman Williams?
Presente.
And Council President Feliciano?
Present.
Myself, Brandon Garcia, municipal clerk, present. Legislative Council, Mr. Edward Kalogi. And City Attorney, Wes Bridges. Thank you. On your call, Madam President.
Let's proceed with the invocation.
Certainly. Almighty God who holds the fate of man and nation, we most humbly beseech thee to bless this ardent city, these deliberations, and these thy servants, that they may act with wisdom and understanding for the good of our community and that greater glory. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. Go ahead.
Change to the agenda?
Certainly.
If I may. So it was requested by Councilwoman Frisbee that we go into executive session with the business administrator, council, legal, and yourself. So I'd like to make a motion for us to include executive session tonight after we conclude the new business.
Understood. That's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by CP, second by Councilwoman Frisbee. Role call. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Present, yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. You may continue.
Certainly. Moving on, Madam President, with the agenda at this time, I believe we have appointments to boards and commissions. What I'm going to do is go ahead and read from names from the resolutions, or for that matter, titles of resolutions if including name, and if those individuals can come up to the podium, I presume, for the council to speak with them. Madam President, would that be all right with you?
Yes, thank you.
Certainly. I'm gonna go ahead and do that now. I'll call the first name. And the first name is Resolution Providing Advice and Consent to Mayor's Appointment of Corey McNeer, landlord, regular member to the rent stabilization board for the term of 7/1/2024 to 12/31/2026. Is Mr. McNeer present? Hit it again. We had a problem with it earlier.
Madam President, with your permission?
Yes, thank you.
Jim Beach, Chief of Staff. We received word from Mr. McNair earlier this week that he had a conflict and we had advised council that he would not be able to be present this evening. So I understood. I thought we were gonna pull his resolution for this evening, or at least table it.
Right. Thank you for that. So what happened was I saw Renai earlier today, and she asked me if I had received her email, but I didn't receive an email about it. So I wrote her back asking about it. So I still hadn't heard. So thank you for clearing that up.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So we'll table it until the August meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is this then a motion? Do I need a motion to table, or is this being pulled by administration?
Pull it.
We'll pull it and resubmit for August.
Understood. Resolution 24-243, Resolution Providing Advice and Consent to Mayor's Appointment of, forgive me, Najwana Johnson, tenant, alternate member to the rent stabilization board for the term of 7/1/2024 to 12/31/2026. And you are present, ma'am. Thank you.
If you could come forward. We're having everyone come forward to address the council.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please do approach the podium. And so I know, Madam President, just as a housekeeping matter, is there any time limit to the questioning for advice and consent?
Three minutes should be fine.
Thank you.
If you could step to the podium, thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. I guess I'll open it up by saying you could tell the council a little bit about yourself, and then if council has any questions for you, they'll ask you the questions.
Thank you for having me. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Nashana Johnson, and I've been a resident of Trenton for over 20 years. So I'm very passionate about this topic. This is really new to me, but I am interested in sharing my point of views as a resident of Trenton and how I can help with this program.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions from any council members for Ms. Johnson?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. I have just, first of all, thank you for joining the Trenton Stabilization Board. It's something that I've been trying to push and work on along with my colleagues here to make sure we get something in place because we know that there's issues with landlords and tenants. So thank you for that. The question really isn't for Nashana. It was just to see if we can, I see there's a difference in the actual resolution paper and what's written on here. Mr. Garcia, on hers, she was the only one that had July 1st through December 31st, 25, and others are to 26. And just probably.
I'm sorry, this is for the?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's a typo, but just.
Oh, okay. I have 26 on mine, but if that's the case, then that's just typo, yes.
Yeah, okay.
We'll make sure that the resolution reflects your full term.
Any other council people with questions?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you for wanting to apply for the position, Ms. Johnson. I really appreciate it. And my question is regarding rent stabilization. This has become a lot bigger of an issue maybe than was, you know, five years ago, or even a little bit longer. So I'm wondering, what inspired you to want to be a part of this board?
So what inspired me is that I'm very passionate about critical issues and about landlord/tenant issues. I've been a tenant for about seven years or so, and I've had some issues as far as safety concerns with my property and how the landlord addressed these concerns. So when I did see this opportunity, I felt like this was an opportunity for me as a renter to share my concerns and to actually learn a lot from others within the same area.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you, Council President. So what I wanted to say, thank you for stepping up for this. It doesn't, it's not always easy to step up and help out the others. It's not always appreciated, but know that you are appreciated here for the work that you will be doing if appointed to this position. It is going to be, you're gonna get calls and get addressed from different places that you may not even think about, but just know that you don't stand alone. And so I just wanna encourage you, and again, just thank you for stepping up to the plate to take on this role. And we appreciate you because this is extremely important. We have many, especially not just my passion is for our seniors, but they have, we have a lot of folks in our community that people are price gouging them with their rent, and we need to put a stop to that. So thank you for this.
Thank you.
Councilman Harrison, no questions?
We good?
Okay. So Ms. Johnson, thank you so much for coming forward and for wanting to represent in such, in such a wonderful way, the constituents here in the City of Trenton. We appreciate you.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Mr. Garcia?
Certainly, Madam President. As we go through these items, would it be okay with the council to decide whether or not they would go on to a potential consent agenda?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you. Shall we move this to consent?
Can I have a motion to move Resolution 24-243 to consent?
Second.
Role call. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to consent. Just very quickly, I wanna ask to, I'll defer to a solicitor. Are we, do we require a motion? Do we require a motion to move the item to the consent agenda? Or are we simply able to label that as consent? Each one is consent going down the line? Motion to move a consent agenda and adopt it by the body. I'm sorry. It requires a vote, yes.
Requires the motion, correct?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Just asking.
Thank you.
Onto Resolution 24-244, Resolution Providing Advice and Consent to Mayor's Appointment of Regina Jackson, tenant, regular member to rent stabilization board for the term 7/1/2024 to 12/31/2026.
Good evening, Ms. Jackson. How are you tonight?
Good evening.
Excellent. Thank you for coming before us tonight. If you would go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll have any questions as they would arrive.
Okay. My name is Regina M. Jackson, and I'm an investigator for the state of New Jersey Division of Taxation. I currently serve on several boards. I'm on the executive boards for the Mercy County Central Labor Council. I'm chairman of volunteers for the Afro-American Cultural Collaborative. I am chairman of education and equity for CWA 1033. The reason why I asked to be on the board is because living, having been living here in Trenton, New Jersey for 40 years, and being a tenant for 29 years, I want to see the residents of Trenton to get a fair and equal shot at rent stabilization. When I came to New Jersey from Connecticut, the rent was modest. It was something that we all could afford and could aspire to get a house or be able to get a one-bedroom apartment without having to go into other budgets for that. So that is the reason why I wanna be on the committee. And I do want y'all to know that I would dedicate 100% of my time to this committee like I do to the board, like I do with any other board that I'm on now.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Are there any council members that have any questions for Ms. Jackson?
So, Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Frisbee?
Thank you. So again, I don't have a question, but I do wanna tell you that your time is appreciated. We value your time. Giving up your time is something that a lot of folks are not willing to do. So we take it seriously, and we're glad that you take it seriously as well. The work that you've already done is greatly appreciated, and people should not have to decide whether or not they're gonna be able to pay their rent or eat. And so the work that you're doing is greatly appreciated and needed in our community. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other council people with questions?
Council President?
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Jackson, we have a few more questions possibly for you. Apologize. No worries, ma'am. So I just wanna say thank you very much for applying, and you have an impressive resume, particularly your investigation background. It was quite interesting reading what you've done in the past, and I think it will be helpful in what we're trying to do. So I know also you are very busy outside of your work. So one of the issues we have had in the past with some boards is having quorums. So we have enough people, you know, to make sure that we're processing different items that come up for our boards. So would you be able to prioritize this over other aspects of your schedule if you need to?
Absolutely. I don't see anything in my schedule or anything about me that would hinder me from doing the job that y'all need me to do here.
Okay, thank you. And are you aware, as I, actually, I'm not, if we have a schedule of meetings when that may occur, so that'll come up in the future?
Yeah, because this is important to me. Like I said, I'm a renter for 29 years. This will be first. Everything else, I will manage it, believe me, I would.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
I just wanna say thank you, Ms. Jackson, for stepping up and wanting to join the Trenton Stabilization Board. Like I said before, it's important, and I'm glad that we're starting to get this back on. Thank you.
Thank you. Am I done?
Anyone else? Okay, so thank you, Ms. Jackson, once again, for your commitment, for your time. We look forward to having some positive things come from this, and you serving, hopefully, with the people, on behalf of the people of the City of Trenton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia? Oh, may I have a motion to move this to consent?
So moved, second.
It's been moved in second. I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to consent. Next resolution, Resolution 24-245, Resolution Providing Advice and Consent to the Mayor's Appointment of Edwin Botchway, tenant, regular member to the rent stabilization board for the term of 7/1/2024 to 12/31/2026.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening. Good, thank you. So thank you for coming before us tonight. If you don't mind, we'll follow the same form. If you just tell us a little bit about yourself, and then if council members have questions, we'll ask at that time. Thank you.
Sure, for sure. Yeah, my name is Edwin Botchway. I've been a tenant here in Trenton for about six years. In addition to that, I'm also a realtor and run a housing counseling agency, Community Housing Services of America, that does housing counseling for low and moderate income families in the city. I think I have a unique perspective as someone that is a tenant, but also has worked with other residents in the city trying to find housing. And frankly, just the numbers haven't been adding up. The average income isn't able to afford the average rent, and it's been hard for a lot of people to find housing. So I think that that perspective of work with people and being able to see firsthand some of the trials and tribulations that they've gone through, some of the requirements that landlords are asking for, just a lot of the aspects of being able to attain housing, and the challenges that they face, has definitely kind of motivated me to wanna be a part of this board and really see change and bring change to the city. So it's definitely something that I've been very passionate about and would love to see improvements in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, any council members have any questions?
Council President, just wanna say thank you. Thank you, Mr. Botchway, for joining the Trenton Stabilization Board and for your time.
No problem. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Council President?
Yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Mr. Botchway?
Hi.
Thank you very much for applying for the board. And if someone has a very strong background and a lot of the aspects that'll come up, I know you're not official on the board yet, but what do you see maybe as the greatest challenge to overcome for a rent stabilization board?
Um, I really think finding unique ways to create that stabilization. I think it's been a problem for a while. Even looking back at some of the places that I rented in the last couple of years, they've almost gone up double the price in maybe two or three years. So I think coming up with unique solutions and really putting our minds to those solutions is definitely gonna be probably the biggest challenge, but definitely something I'm looking to, looking forward to facing.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman Frisbee?
So, Mr. Botchway, one, again, as my colleagues have said, I wanna say thank you for, one, stepping up to the plate. But I like that you bring a different point of view as a realtor. You get to see it from different angles, and you'll be able to help the board seeing it that way. Because with the landlord/tenant, those are two different views. And if you're the realtor, you'll be able to hopefully, I'm not saying play devil's advocate, but you'll be able to, you know, be able to volley it from both points of the spectrum. And that's what we need. We need to make sure that we have every field and every area carried, covered, and you help with that. So thank you for that.
No problem. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
No problem.
May I have a motion to move this to consent agenda?
So moved?
Second.
Moving second, I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes. I'm reading and thinking, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Move to consent. Sorry. Resolution 24-246, Resolution Providing Advice and Consent to Mayor's Appointment of Cynthia Mendez, homeowner, regular member to the rent stabilization board for the term of 7/1/2024 to 12/31/2026.
Hello.
Good evening, Ms. Mendez. Thank you for coming before us tonight. Thank you for your application to the rent stabilization board. Again, if you'll just tell us briefly a little bit about yourself, and then we'll open it up to questions or comments from council.
Uh, my husband and I purchased a home here five years ago, almost six years ago. But my professional experience, a lot of it has been in Trenton. Currently, I'm the Director of Housing Stability for an agency where we help people with back rent, security, deposits, mortgages, and utility assistance. I've been doing this job now for 11 years. So we have seen a lot of people, and while I don't often have direct contact with those folks, I oversee a team of eight people who do. And we have seen, like Mr. Botchway said, rents have gone up, and particularly after the pandemic, people are struggling to have to choose between rents, food, clothing, transportation, childcare. And I just thought that with my professional experience, that I could ask something to this board and bring a perspective from an agency, and what we're seeing, and the challenges that we hear every day from people who reside in the city.
Thank you. Are there any members of council that would like to make a comment or ask a question?
Council President?
Comment.
Oh, wait a minute.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
My question is, you were saying earlier, what do you see as the biggest hurdle being a part of the agency that you can help with the community?
Our challenges are multiple. People, what we're seeing, landlords are waiting to file eviction notices. So when we see people, they're owing $6,000, $7,000, $8,000. We can't help pay that. I mean, we have a lot of money, but not that much money because we have a level of service that we have to fulfill. Affordability, sustainability, you know, Mr. Botchway said, incomes are not matching rents. You know, the average rent for a one-bedroom here is about $1,500 to $1,600 a month. If you're only making $2,000 a month, take, bring home $2,000 a month, then there's an issue. There's a concern. So, and I agree, I think one of the council people said about landlords gouging people. Absolutely. There are a lot of landlords who are not a part of this city. They don't live here. They don't care about it. They just want their rent. That's what we're seeing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Frisbee, and then Councilwoman Williams, and then Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. So, Ms. Cynthia, I wanna thank you, and again, your unique perspective as a homeowner. It is disheartening. I'll say, I know of a woman who I actually, one of my elders, who was brought to my attention, her rent increased so much to the point that she had to make a decision about what she was going to eat, not just if she was gonna eat. She has a cat. She and the cat ate together, and it broke my heart. So that's why when Councilwoman Gonzalez and our other colleagues initiated this, to make sure that we get things in motion, it's important for all of us as city, sitting members of this council, that we get control of what's going on in the city to let our residents know. We are concerned. We're here. We hear them, and we're trying to do something about it, but we can't do it individually. It has to be a collective. So your perspective as a homeowner, you know what some of the aches are going to be for them that others may not know, or because you and your husband have been in this, and you know what could happen, the ins and the outs. So I thank you for that, and I am in appreciation already of what is going to happen for our residents. Just today, I had a conversation with someone about their rent having just been increased by 7.9%, and that is just ridiculous. We're not getting, my pay is not going up by that amount. So how can you go up on someone's rent? And if you are a senior citizen, how do you, what do you do with that? And you're on a fixed income. So thank you for being present. Thank you for stepping up, and you are appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. Ms. Mendez, thank you so much for applying, because getting such a breadth of different experiences, as we're hearing tonight, is gonna be really important for the board to be successful, because we're in a terrible situation across the board, just economically, people being able to afford where they live, creating new housing. So one of the things that jumped off the page for me, in a really good way, is seeing that you have experience with municipal governments. So I'm just curious, as comfortable as you feel answering this question, do you identify any areas that the City of Trenton, as an institution, maybe there's some things we can do on a structural level to help with rent stabilization, help with these situations with landlords and so forth? Because I know there's state law, there's a lot of different things that make it difficult, but are there ways that the City of Trenton could do things better?
I think moving your affordable housing through the process as quickly as possible. And I understand that a lot of times it's held up because of finances, but there's not enough affordable housing in, well, New Jersey, in the country, actually. So just being able to perhaps process things a little more faster will make a difference.
Okay. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Council President? I just wanna, again, say thank you, and just for being on this board. But I did wanna make a comment, because a lot of people don't know that the rent has gone down. The increase, the rent increase has gone down to 4%. And it's not, I don't know where this falls, if this is administration or not, but on the website, it still is not reflecting that. I think it said it ended in July 1st. I know we're only a couple of days in, but on the website, it still doesn't say that we've changed and amended that ordinance. So just, I just wanted to put that for the record, that it is 4% now from 7.5. But thank you.
When we see clients who have had unreasonable or unconscionable increases, we send them to legal services so that they can fight on their behalf, because people don't know. Just like with late payments. I had a case today. The landlord was charging 11% a month. The rent was $1,400. The late fee was $150 every single month. That's ridiculous.
Well, thank you very much. One second, Councilman Harrison.
Do you, my, sorry, the question is, do you happen to have any flyers? Because we're always out in the community. If you have flyers that we can?
I actually have business cards I can leave with you. They are a generic card for our services.
Thank you.
So I will leave them.
Appreciate that.
If you could give your cards to the clerk. Thank you. So thank you for appearing before us tonight. Oh, may I have a motion to move this to consent?
So moved?
Second.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
It's no problem. Role call. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving to consent agenda.
Thank you.
Next resolution, 24-247, Resolution Providing Advice and Consent to the Mayor's Appointment of Simmons Parham, homeowner, regular member to the rent stabilization board for the term 7/1/2024 to 12/31/2026.
Good evening, Ms. Parham.
Hi, it's Simone.
Simone Parham. How you spelling it? S-I-M-O?
S-I-M-O-N-E, like Nina.
Right, okay. So Simone will have to, we'll correct it on there. So thank you for coming before us tonight. We appreciate it. Same drill. Just tell us a little bit about yourself, please, and we'll open it up to council.
Sure. So as I said, my name is Simone Parham. I moved to Trenton probably about eight years ago. I own a townhouse here in Trenton. So I'm an independent retail business owner. I've also been self-employed, distributing products that I imported from overseas. But the reason why I've really wanted to be on this board is my townhouse that I own is in Cooper's Crossing. It's about 100 units, and it's, I sort of view it as a microcosm of what needs to be done for the city. So what we have are people like me, who I bought my unit and I live there. We have people who live in Trenton, own a unit and rent it, and we have absentee. We have people who live in Trenton, own a unit and rent it, and we have absentee owners as well. And I, so I'm on the board. So I am one of the people that, there's five of us on the board. So I'm actually reviewing things like the insurance costs, construction, use, you know, the length of useful life of the roof, all of these different things. We do things like we have to adjust, you know, the monthly fees, which some people are really upset about, and some people are not. But, you know, and it's a tough decision to make. But also, i- in addition to that, where I am, it's smack dab right over where Route twenty-nine or Route one come together. So we also have a lot of, like, we have drug addicts who, like, overdose occasionally on the street. So that's no different than anywhere else. But the point being, you, I I understand that we have to raise fees. You have to raise them enough that you are maintaining, but you're not gouging. And rents need to be where it works for everyone so that we're not living in a dump. Okay, but we're not priced, and we're not, and we're able to have good people live here. And not, if you charge so much, anyone who can is going to flee. Why would you live in Trenton? And anyone who can't afford what's overpriced could look and see, oh, I can go somewhere else, get a better unit, and that's tax money that goes right out the door. So that's my perspective and why I decided to apply.
Thank you. Any council people with a comment or a question? Councilwoman Frisbee.
Thank you, Council President. So I'm actually going to ask a question this time. Thank you, Juan, for stepping up to the plate. I would like to know, how did you hear about the opening for this?
Um, I quit all social media several years ago, and then someone emailed me and linked me to Facebook, to a listing there. And I wrote a lengthy letter and sent my resume. That was back in October, and I just sort of forgot about it, you know, and I just thought, oh, well, there you go. Oh, save them, save them. And then all of a sudden, you know, I get the email. So here I am.
Well, thank you. I just, I know they were like not expecting an answer to questions. I figured I'd do it. But thank you for stepping up to the plate, Ms. Simone, and we appreciate your being here. And just, we are ready to see things get back in order, and our tenants feel like they have some say-so and protection with this. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other council people?
Council President.
Councilwoman Williams.
I'm just saying thank you for joining the board and for showing interest.
Hi, ma'am. Thank you very much for applying, and just a couple of quick questions. So you have a lot of homeowner association experience, it sounds like, a ton. So as far as getting renters, apartment dwellers to be able to speak on their own behalf, advocate for themselves, is that sometimes a challenge?
Yes, it's always a challenge because actually I think that at least, you know, again, where I am, when we have, we have open meetings for everyone and anyone, and most renters don't show up at all. The very, interestingly, I haven't thought about this until now. The renters who show up tend to have landlords who live in the city. The renters who have landlords who live outside of the city never show up. And I think maybe it's because those particular landlords are not really active in their lives and do not communicate with them and pass things along. That's a guess. I just thought of it now.
All right, thank you. And then my, just a human interest question. So I noticed that you listed that you're a football official.
I'm not a, I would like to be.
Oh, it's listed under awards, hobbies, and interests.
Probably fantasy football. Sorry, it was October when I applied.
All right. So somebody stuck, all right. I was just very curious. I, I lost. You know, Aaron Rodgers' great daughter is a football official, was very impressive. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to move this to consent?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried, move to consent. Resolution twenty-four dash two four eight, resolution providing advice and consent to the mayor's appointment of Sabrina Isom, homeowner, regular member to the rent stabilization board for the term of seven one twenty twenty four to twelve thirty-one twenty twenty six.
Good evening, everyone, and correct spelling, correct saying is Isom.
Isom, thank you.
Thank you.
I stand corrected.
That's okay.
You got it.
Good evening, Ms. Isom. Thank you for coming before us tonight. So if you would just tell us briefly a few things about yourself, and then we'll open it up to council.
Okay, I'm a lifelong resident of Trenton. I grew up here. So beautiful city. I enjoyed growing up here. And over the years, things have just went down. Currently, I'm a grievance specialist. But I'll be starting a new role in DCA dealing with the housing in Section Eight, so that will be another area. I'm also a realtor. I understand property management. I've taken people to court and all that other good stuff. So I'm a little bit versatile, and I'm the football official. I'm passionate about with being in the rent stabilization board because, yes, there are price gouging, and landlords need to be held accountable for what they're doing. They're raising the rent, but they're not even keeping up the properties. So you have the garbage and things and all that nature. And yes, I'm one that will call the city and say, I need you to come over here and look at that. So I'm looking to basically get these landlords in line and doing what they're supposed to do and and do what they, and be held accountable.
Thank you. Any council members with any questions or comments? Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes, Council President, thank you. So one, besides, I want to thank you. And again, you bring the perspective as that realtor, and I love that you're not afraid to speak up and defend those who will need defending. So you're going to be the voice for them. I want to just say to everybody in general, I want to ask you all to take this and take this personal. And which I believe everyone who's come out, has come up so far, has done just that. It feels like you guys are taking this personal force. That's how I feel when it comes to the residents and city. That I, whatever I'm doing, when something negative happens for them or positive, I I I take it personal. And so that's what I'm hearing with all of you, and I appreciate that. Like you and Mrs. Mendez and others have said, most of, not most, many of the landlords, they don't even live here. So these folks are just, a lot of times, our residents are just numbers in their bank account when they collect the rent. So we need to make sure that they know there are people behind this. There are lives that are being affected by this. And so I appreciate you in the, um, the air that you bring with this. And I know that you'll treat it with the passion, and I know that it is due. So thank you for stepping up, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Any other council people?
Council President.
Councilwoman Williams, and then Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you. Hi, ma'am. I'm glad you're the football official. My pages are stuck. So my quick question is regarding code enforcement, particularly upon landlords. It's something over time that's gotten, let's just say, not very well executed at times. Negligence by landlords' attitude that they do not have to respond to citations, they do not have to fix things. So would you say that these are areas that it should not be easy for the Trent, City of Trenton, or it should be easy for the City of Trenton to approve upon? Or are there different ways that maybe the landlords are legally getting around things?
They are legally getting around things. I don't think the city, um, it's like, well, we have to do this morning, we have to send them this letter, and then we have to do this. No, if you want to rent in the City of Trenton, then you need to do certain things accordingly because you are bringing down a city, especially a lot of these people or take these landlords do not live here, like they said. So you don't care about the city. So I have a problem with that. And then especially like you have tenants, especially if you have four units. You're supposed to have certain, you're supposed to have garbage cans, you're supposed to have somebody that keep up the landscaping and things of that nature, and they don't do that. And I don't know to what degree the inspection department go around to check for that. But like, again, I have somebody that live next door to me, and I call the city all the time, but we kind of have a report that they know they have to keep their house up because I'm not living like that, especially I'm a taxpayer. So I shouldn't have to live like that. Nobody should have to live like that. You should want to live somewhere where it's clean and respectable.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Ms. Sabrina, I just want to say thank you, as I said to everyone else, for wanting to step up and join this rent stabilization board. We appreciate that effort.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming before us tonight. Oh, wait a minute, Councilwoman Harrison.
I want to first thank you because you said your love for the city, and that's always good to see when people come here, and they have that passion and love for the city. And accountability, that's huge. We need to hold ourselves up here. We need to hold our neighbors, everybody accountable. I can see it in you, and I know you'll do a great job. So thank you for joining this board. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have a motion to move this?
Second.
I'm sorry, what are you saying, Director Bridges?
He's the only, one of the only females.
He, he's kind of joking with me because I also do basketball, so I give back, and I love to work with my little kids. Those are my babies, and I tell the parents, I'm not here for you. I'm here for the kids. So I always give back some type of way if I can. So that's why he's messing with the whole.
Thank you. All right. So can I have a motion to move this to consent agenda?
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call, Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to Council President, we do have another matter for a board here. So I, um, I'd like to ask you if you want to entertain Resolution twenty-four dash two nine seven now. That is a resolution for, Ms., excuse me. Resolution appointing members to the Housing Authority of, Housing Authority of Trenton Board of Commissioners. Ms. Audrey M. Walker.
Yes.
Ms. Walker.
If Ms. Walker's present. That's two nine seven.
Good evening, Ms. Walker. Thank you for joining us.
Council President.
So we'll follow in in due form. Please tell us a little bit about yourself, and then we'll open it up to questions or comments from council. Thank you.
So my name's Audrey Walker. I have been a resident of the City of Trenton my entire life. I love this city. I have worked in this city as a service for many years. I've worked on a lot of counts, officials running for council, mayor. I've worked on several boards. I've been on the board in, at the Marriott Hotel. I worked on the C O C board, the continuing care executive board. I've been on the U P I board. I have worked for the Trenton Housing Authority for the last forty years, and I retired from Trenton Housing Authority on, in February of this year.
Thank you. And why do you want to serve on the rent stabilization board? I mean, on the, never mind. I'm done. Any council people have any questions? I was just seeing if you was paying attention.
I caught that.
Right. Any, any council people with any questions or comments? We good?
Councilwoman, I'm just going to say, Audrey, I just want to say, I'm sorry, Juan, Council President.
That's fine. Thank you, Councilwoman.
I want to just say thank you for all the work, all the service that you've already provided to our city for many of us. And it is appreciated that you even want to extend yourself even more, which I can't see how, but you're going to do it. I know you'll do it with excellence. So appreciate you for just stepping up once again, and I look forward to seeing you help this city grow and move forward even further. So thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Frisbee.
Thank you. Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, ma'am. Just want to say thank you for wanting to join this board. And being that you have so much experience with T H A in your work career, I think you'll bring something unique to this. So I just wanted to ask you, what do you see maybe as one challenge or opportunity that T H A can maybe take on in the future that you'd like to see them take on?
Well, I would like to, well, you know that they now, they have, um, they are going to be, I'm going to just say, we are positive that they'll be getting the Choice Neighborhoods grant. And with the Choice Neighborhoods grant, I see, I think the most challenging thing will be, uh, finding housing for people that we have to move around. And also, um, right now, unfortunately, Trenton Housing Authority has many vacancies. And unfortunately, these vacancies were, are because of twenty twenty, uh, when the governor, he had the moratorium where people, they, we couldn't put anybody in court. And unfortunately, what that did was caused the mindset of our people to not pay their rent. So right now, Trenton Housing Authority is really fighting, trying to get these A R balances up. So we have to cook, gonna have to, well, we're gonna have to come up with some ideas as to how to do that. They've done a lot with the E R A that the government gave, but unfortunately, even then, E R A paid off like ten thousand dollar balances, eight thousand dollar balances, and then the, the resident got back into the same mode of not paying the rent. So I think collecting rents, filling vacancies, and relocating residents when we get this grant is going to be our, our most immediate challenges.
You're very much, ma'am.
That's great.
You're welcome.
Any other council people?
I just want to say thank you, Ms. Walker, for your service and for joining, wanting to express an interest in the vacancy that we had on the board. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Harrison.
I would do the same thing. I would like to thank you for your many years of caring for the city, loving the city, and helping, uh, project positivity in the city. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So Ms. Walker, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming out and for your time and for your diligence and your service to the City of Trenton. Thank you.
And it's a, it's a breath of fresh air seeing this council. Just wanted to know that. You're welcome.
Thank you. May I have a motion to move this to consent agenda?
So moved. Second.
Moving to second, Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried, move the consent agenda.
Thank you.
And with that being done, Madam President.
So I want to point out just real quick, I just want to say just one quick thing. I do want to commend the mayor and his selection committee on the the choices for the rent stabilization board because of the diversity that has been brought before us and the varied levels of expertise and experience. I'm hopeful that we will see and hear about some very positive results and some fruitful conversations and some things really getting done. So I just want to shout out the mayor and his selection team in picking the people. And also, thank you again to Ms. Walker for coming forward for the Housing Authority. We're just looking forward to seeing some great things and us moving forward in a positive direction. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Madam President. We've reached the point of presentations, and I believe there is a presentation for the budget introduction, the furthest solicitor to which is proper, whether that introduction or that presentation take place prior to the two resolutions that are listed underneath that item on the agenda. Gentlemen, I'm going to go ahead and say that that intro, that that presentation take place first.
The what presentation?
Yes.
Presentation?
Budget. Yeah. Would you guys like to proceed now? Okay. And we got to get this up a little.
So just to be clear, we don't need our actual budget books right now, we're just doing a quick overview beforehand. Okay, thank you. All right, proceed. Thank you.
All right, Madam President. Good evening. Adam Cruz, Business Administrator of the Gray City, capital city of the Trenton, New Jersey. I am here tonight with Assistant Business Administrator Colin Cherry, Chief of Staff, Jim Beach. And we are here to introduce the mayor's budget for this year, twenty twenty-four. As many of you know from previous conversations that we have had in the past regarding the budget, this budget is not something that we put together in a month or two months. This is actually an ongoing process from when the day that the previous year's budget is adopted. On the same year, we immediately switch gears and begin the following year's budget. And we actually started this budget back in October of last year. So it is a very long process because every single line item that you have in your book is something that we have gone through with a lot of details. is something that we have gone through with a lot of details. This budget is probably very unique because this is the first time that D C A has been hand in hand with us, working together since that first day. So since October, D C A has been actually having conversations with us from day one. From the day that we said, okay, all hands on deck, we are now going into the 2024 budget. D C A was sitting at the table with us. We knew it was going to be a very challenging year, and so we decided that it was the best thing to do was just get them at the table with us so that they could see the challenges that we were facing. And, and so here it is. We were notified about three weeks ago as to how much money the city of Trenton was going to be receiving in Capital City aid as well as transitional aid. And for the first time, probably in over probably since 2009, probably, or 2011, the city of Trenton has received the most money in transitional aid. And that just goes to show the amount of work that has been done. The outcry, the lobbying that everyone probably from the mayor to you, the assembly members from Legislative District 15, Senator Turner, everybody that we could get on board to hear our outcry for help. We were apparently, we were very successful at conveying that message. This budget is very challenging. We don't have luxuries in this budget. It is always for the needs that we need to, for the services that the residents of the city of Trenton need. And yes, it's always lean, but it is also a budget that has been permitted by D C A for us to continue to to move and increase as we go along. And this year, as I mentioned, D C A was very generous to us. So I'd like to give a special thanks to D C A for allowing that to happen. Commissioner Commissioner has been excellent at meeting with us and, you know, she was very generous. So with that, I will begin the, the process, the
One second, B A Cruz. Mr. Garcia, if you would mark Councilwoman Edwards and Council Vice President Figaro Kattemberg as present, they are
Already have.
Thank you.
So I'll go through the overview and then Colin Cherry, the Assistant Business Administrator, will move to give you more details on the numbers. So the, as you can see on your screen, the proposed calendar year 2024 budget totals $280 million, including grants, which is an increase of $6.1 million as compared to the, to the $274 million budget from 2023. The municipal tax rate has been proposed in this budget is a 2% increase, which means that it's going from $3.60 to $3.67, which is an increase of seven cents for every, for every $1,000. This increase is mandated by D C A, and this is not just for the city of Trenton. It's actually for all of the municipalities that are receiving transitional aid in the state of New Jersey. So we received notification that, that we had to do an increase. But we are still grateful that for the last three years, the city was successful at submitting a zero tax municipal, municipal tax increase for three years in a row. So this is the first time in four years that we are increasing the, the tax rate. But again, as we mentioned, it's only seven cents from what the previous tax rate was. The municipal tax levy, including schools and minimum, and the minimum library tax will increase from $82.3 million in the calendar year 2023 to 83.8 in 2024. An increase of $1.4 million. The proposed calendar year 2024 budget includes a $37 million in transitional aid and $10 million in Capital City aid. The the proposal in the calendar year 2024 budget includes appropriations which exceed the cap's restrictions by $12.8 million and requires the state permission by waiver to exceed. So this is something actually that is, that is, that we have to start the, the, the process in the past that has not been the case. Every time we come to you before, we always come with a balanced budget and also ensuring that everything is under the, the expenditure cap. However, because of all of the increases that we have had in spending, the world economy, prices going up, the general liability, insurances is actually the amount is $12.8 million that we cannot fit under the cap. When we came to, to D C A with this concern, they actually asked that we introduce the budget with this exception of the $12.8 million above the cap. And we are being permitted to then introduce the budget and then go in front of the local finance board that requests a waiver. As I mentioned before, this is, this is the very first time that this occurs. However, many municipalities in the state of New Jersey are going through that right now because of everything going up. In fact, yesterday, the local finance board, we went in front of the local finance board for the ordinance for the streets repairs for the water department. And there were three other municipalities asking for a waiver to go above the cap. So when we go to the August meeting, I am sure that we are not going to be the only ones there again making this request. So the D C A is actually confident that the local finance board will be will be in agreement. We have to, you know, we have to put our, our reason, a reason why we need a waiver. But we're confident that we have enough reasons. We have been very reasonable at spending. However, the nature of the world economy keeps, you know, just making prices going up and everything is more expensive nowadays. And so there is no other way to actually address these, the $12.8 million to make it go under the cap. And in my opinion, the, the spending cap is something that the state of New Jersey should not have because there's already a, a tax levy cap of 2%. So when I present a budget to you, we are not allowed by state to increase the budget, increase taxes by no more than 2%. There is this other expenditure cap, which I just mentioned to you, but that is actually expenditure that will not, that kind of control themselves by the 2% tax, which is kind of crazy. And to me, it's something that the state should just get rid of. I've spoken to other business administrators and they also agree. They say it's the dumbest thing that the state has. But unfortunately, legislatures, legislators don't want to touch it because of the ramifications that are seen by public as actually something that they will be allowing municipalities to increase expenditures more and more and more. And that is actually not the case, but there is no will from the legislators to actually take this on and fix it for the municipalities. And the more we go on, expenditures continue to go higher. There will be more of this probably in the coming future. And hopefully, at some point, the state, a legislator will address it and fix it for other municipalities. So so we are going to be presenting, we are going to be attending, well, we are going, first, we need to apply, of course, to the local finance board to bring this to their attention. And, and I guess we will come back to you and advise you what was the outcome. At this point, when we're done with the presentation, the budget is presented, you know, a resolution is, is adopted. We then, the budget then goes to the, to D C A for then more thorough review of all of the line items. And then they will make their recommendations. Once they give us the go ahead for, for adoption, then we meet with the, with the clerk and then make the determination when the public hearing for the budget will be held. And then, of course, when the adoption date will also be. So I would leave Colin to continue with the presentation, or I can take some questions now before the rest of the, or I can come back when Colin is done with the, with the remainder.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Just to touch on like where we are. So thank you for kicking this off for us. With regards to the 2% mandatory increase in the taxes, when is that going into effect? When will, when will residents see this?
That goes into effect into, in the fourth quarter because as you know, we already did the third quarter. We, we did a the same tax rate that we had for the first and second quarter of this year.
Okay, so we'll see the increase this year. In addition to the additional from the county as well. So we all just need to be mindful about
And, and, and when, and when Colin continues, actually, you will see that the increase for the average, what the increase for the average home is and, and how much it is for the okay, here. So the proposed tax at 100,000 in a one year is $70 per year. And then, but the average home in Trenton is actually around $70,000, which is equals to $51 per year.
Okay. All right. And then with regard to this increase that is, that is mandated by, by D C A to take, I know that it's almost like us beating a dead horse, right? The, the state sits on over 47% of our property. We get the pilot, we don't get the full assessed value. You know, again, and I don't want to speak for my colleagues, but it's a little frustrating right now that we're here, that we don't get the total tax assessed value from the state for the buildings in which they occupy. And then we see again that the governor's extended more work from home time, which affects our revenues and our business and all of that kind of stuff. And then they want us to transition off, but then they're not helping us in that regard. And I'm grateful for the money. Thank you for the $37 million transitional aid and thank you for the $10 million Capital City aid. However, I still believe that in adequately helping our residents here in the city of Trenton, we really need to do something about that pilot that we have in the payment. And I know that we had, I think, that Department of Health building, that was a brand new building, right? That, and then the taxation building, they gave us like a million dollars each on that. But if we were to really assess the value of that Department of Health building, we're very shy of what it could be. And then let's not even forget about the Department of Education that sits on the water that we can't really build out and do anything on that. So while I understand, I guess, I mean, if it's mandated, it's mandated. But I'm just hopeful that we have more discussions and that the state is actually open to hearing us doing something about that pilot and, and helping us out in that regard in order to help us truly transition from off the aid so we can kind of move into, into equal footing. Any other council people have any questions real quick before Colin jumps in with the numbers? I just wanted to say that.
Council President?
Thank you very much for your question because I'm on the same line of thinking.
Right.
But I do have one question for Mr. Cruz because this will be asked by constituents. There is no way we can get a waiver on a tax increase that's mandated by the state. Like, our hands are totally tied. Is that correct?
We had several conversations about the, about the tax increase. Jim, myself, the mayor, several communications. In fact, Jim, the mayor, and the commissioners sat together this weekend. That was brought up one last time. And we were asked that we increased, we do the 2% tax increase.
Okay. Thank you for the fight. Appreciate that.
Thank you. And I still, and B A Cruz, the question that I had at the last meeting about the itemization of the tax bills?
Yes.
So that way, please, is there an update on that so that constituents can see where their taxes are being raised?
That is correct. So for the fourth quarter taxes, when we, once the budget is adopted, that tax bill will have the breakdown because the one that we adopted the last time is actually not reflective of what the new tax rate will be. So this is just based on the last couple of quarters. So we will, and I already had that conversation with the tax collector. And she is also in agreement and there's, an additional piece will be placed inside of the tax bill when we put it out.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much. Councilman Harrison?
Mr. Cruz, I, I agree with my colleagues. 47 million is impressive. But in lieu of, like you said, all these state buildings that are here, that 2% tax, I, yeah, I have a problem with that because I think at the end of the day, that number should be closer to 60 million. Because the, the capital city, we deserve as much as anybody else. And I'm grateful for your hard work and all everybody else's hard work, but I, I hope we continue that that money increases. But the taxes, this city right now, we have a problem with housing. When we have all these state buildings here, that's my concern because we're, the prices are going through the roof. And here we go again. The state should be saying that the city of Trenton, hey, you actually got a council now that's willing to work with the administration, willing to work with the D C A. Give us, like my colleague had said, that waiver on that 2% because I think anything we can do to move this city together, we have a rent stabilization board now. We've got a lot of beautiful people in this room that are going to push the city forward. So we need state to continually step up. And I think 47 is good.
Yeah.
But it should be closer to 60.
Sure. And I just want to remind council that when this administration actually came into place in 2019, I believe it was, 2018, we, the city received $6.7 million. So we have gone from $6.7 million, $6.8 million to now $47 million. So it's almost a $40 million increase that we have been successful because we continue to convey the message that we need to get to a reasonable number. And, you know, we're, we are actually glad that little by little, we're, you know, we're, we're getting there.
Thank you. But that, but that 6.7 mil, that decrease from what it was before wasn't due to the performance of the city. It was due to the governor that was in place, right? That took the money from the city. So I'm not, I'm not gonna say, and this is a good thing I'm saying, that it was by any fault of the city that the money got taken away. It was because of the leadership that was in place at that time that took the money away. And so I do commend you all on the performance of moving forward and moving up. But again, 47 million is nice. The 2% tax increase is not. And we need more money for the capital city so that we can operate not just to survive, but to also succeed and excel and move forward. And I'm hopeful that at some point in time, again, the state would see that and continue to help us to move to that, to that front.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, yes. Somebody?
No, over here, Council President.
Okay, Councilman Harrison?
You had brought up, Council President brought up a good point. No matter whether it's a Democrat or Republican governor,
That's right.
we need to get our fair share. So hopefully, in this great state, we could start learning how to work together. Because whatever party you are, remember, you're the party of the people because it's people in this Because whatever party you are, remember, you're the party of the people. Because it's people in this city. They deserve better. They deserve both parties. Instead of slamming heads together, sit down and do what's right by the people of this great city. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President. Good evening, members of council. I will, I promise I will not bore you with all of these numbers. But we'll just, we'll just give you an overview. I will mention that for members of council and the members of the public, once we are done with this presentation this evening, we will be posting it on our website where you can find all of our previous budgets through, I think about the last six or seven years. We'll post the introduced budget, assuming it is successfully introduced this evening, as well as this presentation. And you can go look at our prior presentations and prior budgets. So just as an overview, you can see in the center column, the adopted budget from twenty twenty three and in the leftmost column, the budget we are introducing this evening. On the far right is the variance. Again, for folks that aren't used to looking at these spreadsheets, numbers that are in parentheses are reductions, numbers that are, are increases. Just to reiterate and to continue to cheer on this number, that twelve million dollar increase in transition aid is, is not insignificant at all. We see some reductions in other forms of state aid and a reduction in, in grants for this year. But you can see that our, our totals have gone up by a little over six million dollars in total on both the revenue and appropriation side. Most of that number is due to increases in our insurances, increases in our salary and wage and increases commensurate with our salary and rate wage in fringe, fringe benefits. Both salary and wage and fringe benefits have gone up by almost eight million dollars each. I will move on to the next slide, but we can come back and ask any questions. This is just a pie chart to give a visual overview of what our revenues look like. So you can see that our largest single source of revenue is our tax revenue. And right behind that is state aid. And then that is stated other than transition aid or capital city aid. That's what that yellow slice represents. And then transition aid, capital city aid and a number of our other revenue sources. Just to summarize our revenue, excluding the grants, our revenue totals two hundred and fifty six point seven million dollars. This budget includes that thirty seven million in transition aid as well as ten million in capital city aid and fifty nine point five million in the energy receipts tax, also a state aid number. This is going to be very small on the screens. I apologize, but again, it will be posted online and we'll make sure it's distributed to all members of council. But this is just a pie chart of our appropriations. As is always the case, the largest single category of appropriations is salary and wage, and that's thirty six point eight percent of our budget. And then just behind that is fringe benefits, which represent twenty five point six percent of our budget. I think it is important for everybody to, to remember that when we're looking at the budget, when we see someone's salary line item, it also has a commensurate fringe benefit number that really makes the cost a little bit higher than we, we see when we, when we look at that salary number. Just a textual summary, about forty five percent of our total budget is what we refer to as department costs of fringe benefits are twenty six percent. Debt service is about nine percent. General liability and workers comp together represent about five percent. And the remaining fifteen percent are our reserve for uncollected taxes, grants, the library budget and assorted other smaller appropriations. And then Mr. Cruz already talked about this, but just to highlight the tax impact of the budget, we are proposing a municipal tax increase from three dollars and sixty cents per hundred dollars of assessed value to three dollars and sixty seven cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. And for the average homeowner in the city of Trenton, that represents about fifty one dollars per year at seventy thousand dollars of valuation. But obviously, if your property is more or less expensive than that, that, that changes. But know that it's seven cents per hundred dollars of assessed value that we're, we would be increasing. And that's all the slides we have for this evening. Are there any further questions I can answer for any members of council?
So just to be clear, thank you, Mr. Cherry. Just to be clear, when we're talking about these numbers, and again, the, the, the increase, when we're talking on the lower end of the assessed values of these homes at a hundred thousand or seventy thousand dollars, when you have someone with an assessed value of over two hundred and fifty or sixty thousand dollars, it is far more than seventy dollars.
Yes.
A year. So, so as we're, as we're talking about this, we want to be as open and clear to everybody that we can, right? We're shooting low with the numbers and I get it. But there are people in other areas of the city that are paying already outrageous sales tax as it is. And now we're telling them that due to the DCA mandate, taxes are going to increase. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands where it's coming from and what the impact truly is going to be as we move forward and why it is important that the administration does keep having the conversations with the state and why we need to keep pushing for additional relief. Because we have a lot of renters, we have homeowners and we want the people to stay. But we need help in helping to make that happen.
Of course.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Cherry? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
So thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Cherry, and thank you, Mr. Cruz for coming up and giving this overview to us. I wasn't going to say anything, but I just had, had to. So I'm grateful for this. And I have to say, operating from a deficit is a painful position. And that's where I feel like our city has been and we continue to be. I can only imagine where it would be with the great individuals that we have that have been meeting with DCA over and over again. If we, if you guys, not if, I know you still put in the work to make sure that the city got what it, it currently has. Where would we be if we were not operating from a deficit? It hurts when we have to tell, tell folks, we can't pave this road, but we can only pave that road. We can only cut down this tree, but we can't do those trees. Those are the questions that I get nonstop. I can't tell you how much my emails are flooded with constituents who have, who have legitimate complaints, legitimate concerns. And I am so appreciative of the work that you and our staff is doing and that you have opened the doors again with DCA. And I think it's brilliant that you meet with them and the mayor as well every single week to make sure that they know. It's not just a matter of them seeing things or sending it in an email, to have them come into the city and see where we are. And what we're working with and what we, what the need is, is nothing like somebody telling, no one can tell you my experience. Only I can tell you, give you my experience and I can walk you through it, but no one else can tell it for me. So I thank you guys, gentlemen, for all the, and there, there are ladies, I'm sure that were included, and I'm sure there were. I appreciate the work, but I'm looking forward to the day when we are not operating from a deficit and that our community is actually in the green all the way. But I do want to commend you. I want to commend all of you who have put in the work with DCA. It's, I know it's not easy and I know you're putting in long hours and I want you to know that it is appreciated. And the work is, is showing up now for us to go from six percent to, to six mil and now we're at forty seven is absolutely incredible. So I thank you. I thank you. We are appreciative and our city is better for it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other council member?
Council Presidents? I was, I just wanted to say I was glad to see that the pilots have gone down. I noted it's only a couple hundred thousand dollars. I was curious, is that because of expiring pilots?
Largely, yes, or properties that are no longer under the ownership of the individual who received the pilot.
Okay. And then unfortunately, we did see that grants are down, as you mentioned. So if you could explain a little bit more why that is the case.
Grants fluctuate from year to year, so it's always hard to predict exactly what we're going to receive. I can't predict what they will be next year either, though it is important to note that when we talk about budgeting, we typically refer to our budget without the grants because grants make, they make an appropriation and a revenue to offset that appropriation. So while grants are excellent and allow us to do additional work, they are, are almost a separate category of budget. So they fluctuate a lot more than what we would consider kind of our, our core budget.
Okay, because they're not static and you can't necessarily count on them.
Correct. And we could theoretically receive a grant for five million dollars tomorrow. And we'd come to you, we'd ask to add it to the budget. You'd see it added five million on the revenue side, five million on the appropriation side, and then we, we'd move forward. So even if in the introduced budget, you don't see all the grants, that is compared to the adopted budget from last year. When we adopt, we may end up with a grant number that looks more similar to last year. It's, there's another almost six months left in this year. So I'm sure we will, we will be aggressively seeking grants as well. And, and who knows how successful we'll be.
From your mouth to God's ears. But thank you very much for all of your work, Mr. Cruz. I know this is your last budget with us. And then Mr. Beach and your team, because it certainly is not easy, particularly when we're starting with a structural deficit. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. Madam President, we have two budget introduction resolutions at this time. If I could have a motion and roll call on those, I'll read those by title each. Resolution twenty four dash three oh one, resolution authorizing the city of Trenton's calendar year budget to be read by title only.
So move.
Second.
Motion second, roll call. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And resolution twenty four dash three zero two, resolution to approve the introduction of calendar year twenty twenty four budget.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Madam President, we've reached a point of public comment. If we could have a public comment clipboard, please. And to the public as we're receiving that clipboard, public comment will be five minutes.
How many people is it?
I'm sorry, let's look at how many people we have listed. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we move public comment to three minutes.
So second.
So move in the second, I'll call the roll. Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettenberg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Public comment will be three minutes for each individual. You may, to the public, please state your name and address for the record. You may address anything that you wish. Just please know the council is not obligated to respond. First person listed of public comment, Kendra McCoy.
There we go. Okay, first time. It's not, not nervous at all. Hi, everyone. My name is Kendra McCoy. I live at six oh one Lancaster Court, El Mead. And I am here on behalf of the Watershed Institute. First of all, I want to say thank you to Councilwoman Williams for making me aware of this meeting tonight. And I am happy to be able to speak to you. So the Watershed Institute's mission is to keep water clean, safe and healthy for our community. That mission is at the heart of everything we do. We use science, education, advocacy and conservation to further this. And we work within the Stony Brook Millstone and Central Delaware River watershed, which includes Trenton. I'm here to discuss the new municipal separate storm sewer system permit, known as MS four permit, that is now in effect and how Trenton can be part of a regional planning for the Assam Pink watershed. A core part of this permit is the watershed management plan, which includes several goals, including improving water quality and reducing flooding. This work requires, this project requires work in three phases across five years, including multiple tasks like reviewing existing data, evaluating pollutant loads in water bodies, developing best management practices for making these changes, conducting several types of monitoring and identifying improvement projects. Each town in New Jersey is required to have an MS for, MS four permit. Counties or nonprofits like the Watershed Institute can help facilitate or sponsor a regional multi-jurisdictional WMP, which is part of the MS four permit. If the municipality includes multiple watersheds, they can include that in multiple ways. So this WMP allows for funding sources to be identified, projects to be located on where they have the most impact and ensures that work will be ongoing and updated over time because the environment is not static. This allows us to, it allows you to enact projects like impervious cover removal, green infrastructure, stormwater refits, stream and lake restoration, flood plain connection. And due to, due to the sheer scope of the work required by the MS four permit, the benefits of regional, of a regional approach are numerous and significant. Among these benefits are the fact that water does not respect political boundaries. So it's more efficient to study whole watersheds. It is also more efficient at addressing environmental justice issues. I am urging the council to work with the Watershed Institute on a regional approach along their Assam Pink neighbors and encourage you to reach out to me at kmcoy@thewatershed.org to join the Assam Pink Roundtable where we meet virtually every two to three months to discuss with our Assam Pink neighbors how to employ some of these techniques for maximum effect for minimal cost. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I have a question for you. With this, I know you, you sent us emails.
Yes, I did.
Right. Have you talked to the administration at all or talked to our director from the Water Department about this?
I am in some connection, but not yet.
Haven't had a formal presentation with them yet?
No, I haven't.
Okay, so I would suggest, and thank you for this, I would suggest, as Councilwoman Edwards had, had written back, as we had discussed it, if you would talk to the administration, especially because you're talking about the monitoring, the infrastructure and all this other kind of things like that. We would like to have them, we would have liked to have them present you forward to us after you've had the conversation with them first about it.
Absolutely.
Because they will understand. They're the experts in this. We are not.
No, completely.
So I would ask respectfully that you now make an appointment. Our water director is here. That you would give him your information and then you can set up a presentation with Director Semple. And then we can possibly revisit this at another time.
All right.
But I thank you so much for your presentation tonight.
Have a good evening.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia?
Next person I have listed is Janelle Clark.
Hi, good evening. Councilmembers, good afternoon. How's it going? I'm here today. My name is Janelle Clark. My residence is six oh one Pine Street. I'm in North Ward of Trenton. My comments today is that I find it very hard living in Trenton. At this time, we moved here, my, my family and I, we moved here three years ago from New York City. At this time, we feel that we are being penalized for living in Trenton. Number one, in twenty twenty three, our property taxes were roughly eight thousand. In twenty twenty four, it has gone up to over nine thousand. And we estimate that in twenty twenty five, it will be ten thousand. Some of you council members spoke about what is the impact, the impact for us. One, we may have to leave. One, we may have to leave Trenton. And two, we will have to choose between, I guess, living expensive food, because paying our property taxes, that's something that we have to do. The second issue is the parking. Not parking for our personal cars, but parking as far as commercials. So you're asking for, say, 9,000 or 10,000 in property taxes. However, my husband find it very difficult to park in front of our residents when the parking enforcement comes around and ticket his truck. So we are being penalized, one, in the taxes, and two, with the parking, because once he brings his truck, there's nowhere for him to keep it. So eventually, we will have to move out of Trenton, because we can no longer afford it, and we've been only here three years. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. So I would encourage those that are speaking during public comment, if you don't mind, to stick around for a bit for our civic comment, because council members may want to address part of what you said during their civic comment time. Okay? I just want to put that out there. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Louis Brady.
Good evening, council members. Louis Brady, 618 Franklin Street. We've been, let me see, how can I say this? I have said this numerous times about the 629 Franklin Street, about the bikers that we've been having problems with. And I've called the Trenton Police about it. They turned around and they said, "Well, we can't do anything if they're not doing anything." Well, yeah, they're revving their bikes up at nighttime, and it's disturbing, it's disturbing my dog, and it's disturbing the neighbors. You know, they're there 8 o'clock at night, having their own party or having some kind of a get-together. I don't know what they're doing. And on everyday, Chambers Street and Roebling Avenue, they're doing construction. And since Chambers Street is blocked, we're, they're coming down our street, Franklin Street. And they're doing 35, 40 miles an hour. And there's kids outside playing, and I'm afraid that one of them is going to get hit by a car. So I don't know what else. I've tried to talk to the police about it, but they're not doing anything. I don't know what else to do. Thank you.
Manuel Alisea?
Hello. I'm here in concern of Humboldt Street. I've been emailing.
Sir, could we please say your name and address?
My name is Manuel Alisea.
And your address for the record?
127 Humboldt.
Thank you.
I've been complaining about these trees that the City of Trenton has planted, but they don't prune them, they don't do anything to them. I've emailed every department. I emailed the mayor's office. I'm pretty sure Ms. Frisbee done had a million of my emails with pictures. I have pictures where there's no leaves on the trees, so now I have pictures with the, and it's on the houses. It's tearing up our houses. I mean, if you're going, if you're not going to take care of them, why don't you just take them down? It's not fair. We pay taxes too, you know? And then also, we tearing up our cars. Barbara Street, coming off of Pennington and the Willow Street. There's potholes. I just had to pay $1,000 to fix my truck last year, hitting a pothole. And I have emails saying, "Yeah, the paving is starting all over in April." They haven't even been on Barbara and Humboldt and none of the street. Like, what's going on? Like, I'm going to every department, but nobody's, they just saying, "Yeah, we wrote it down and it's going to get done." Nothing is getting done. I'm trying to figure out what's going on. I mean, they say they don't have manpower for the tree department, but I see all these seasonals running around, driving, and doing whatever they're doing in the city, but how you don't have enough manpower? You just hire all these seasonals. Something needs to be done. So that's, I mean, it's not fair. And I even have, because I'm the Democratic Committee person for District 6, West Ward, District 6. So I'm pretty much getting phone calls from everybody. I even have an older lady, I don't have her address, I just text her son. She has a, she owns a home, she's elderly. There's a tree next to a city property on Trent Street. I've complained about that, sent emails. The tree is tearing up her fence. Like, I mean, people don't have that money to fix stuff like this. It's just, it's out of control. And like I said, she has every picture. I sent the pictures to the mayor's secretary, everybody has it. I just talked to Maria as she was leaving out. She knows, but nothing is being done. She's just telling me, "Oh, yeah, I see your emails," but she never responded to my emails. How about that one? She's seeing them, but don't respond to them, you know? So, I mean, something needs to be done. So hopefully, I'm gonna be back. I mean, this is all I can do. I mean, I got a lot of elderly people on my street, so it's like, they're not going to come down here. So it takes me to come down here. So I've been doing that. I make sure that the city-owned properties are being taken care of, because they let them go to waste, and then they turn into dump sites. I have a property on behind my house. It's not city-owned, but these people just throw garbage.
I think that's your time.
Thank you. To your point, I just want to say real quick, there is a tort claim form that you and others can fill out. You get it from the city clerk's office. If damage is done to your property by means of city, like a city tree, the potholes in the street, you have to take pictures, you have to report it. But you can get the tort claim form, and you can fill it out and turn in the information, and it will be sent to the insurance for the city to look into, investigate, and take care of. So not that that escapes, you know, what needs to be done, but that is something that is available to residents, that you go to the clerk's office, pick up the tort claim form, and fill that out and submit it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Please stick around. I'm sure other council members will want to respond during our civic comment. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Austin Edwards?
Still on? Austin Edwards, Trent N W A C P, address 916 Bellevue Ave. Speaking today specifically, I know it's not up for a vote, but just bring to your awareness 24-042, the cannabis bill. Going to briefly make these three points. Number one, we're against this bill, especially with the Trent N W A C P, because it unnecessarily increases police interaction with Black and Latino community members, right? It's not, you know, the 1970s anymore, where we have cartoonishly large, right? You know, things like blunts where people are carrying around, right? A lot of times, we find people with their cannabis in different blacks, or Swishers, or Relos, or Lucys, right? And unless we can entrust our police to have X-ray eyes and X-ray noses, right? It leads to a slippery slope of police interactions, which lead to unnecessary stops, needless and potentially illegal searches, and the humiliation and degradation of our citizens. The thing I fear the most frankly with this bill is that this can lead to a situation like we saw in New York with Eric Garner, who was unnecessarily killed simply because he was selling cigarettes. Number two, the fees that are imposed are extremely excessive. We had plenty of talk earlier about rent increases and budget increases. Filing people $250, $500, and $1,000 for increasing, for doing the same thing. Who has the money to pay that here in our city? These fines again lead to unnecessarily police interaction, warrants, arrests, jail time for something that we have as a legal recreational opportunity here in our state. And finally, we have better mental health treatment options throughout New Jersey. I worked intimately when I was at the AG's office with the Arrive Together program, because even the state of New Jersey understands that if you're smoking multiple times in public, what you don't need is jail time and arrest. What you probably need is mental and substance abuse counseling. Those should be options that are available instead of what we have with 24042. So I'm asking you to kill this cannabis re-criminalization bill. This is really hustling backwards and going backwards and flying in the face of the great work that we've done statewide. Thank you.
Marta Young?
Good evening. I'm Marta Young with Clean Water Action. I live in Lynn Croft, so I'm not a resident. But I'm here to talk to you about the growing campaign of Skip the Stuff. It's a campaign in which.
I'm sorry, excuse me. What's your address?
I'm Lynn Croft, but I'm representing Clean Water Action. Am I able to speak?
You're in Lynn Croft. Is that a city?
It's a city, Middletown.
Okay. So, Mr. Garcia, when we ask for the address, we're asking for the actual street, house number, address? Or are we accepting the city and state? Because if that's the case, everybody could come up and just say Trenton, New Jersey. So can somebody explain what we're doing?
We generally ask for a physical address.
Thank you.
We don't require.
I'm sorry. 31 Seago Lane in Lynn Croft, New Jersey.
Thank you. Continue.
I apologize. I'm here to talk about Skip the Stuff. It's a growing campaign in which it's a triple win, in which restaurants save a lot of money by not giving out unnecessary cutlery and condiments. You only get the cutlery and condiments upon request. So again, the other work I do is working with emergency food providers, Meals on Wheels, soup kitchens, and it's saving. I have case studies that's showing how much money it's saving these organizations. So I'm asking if you would look at introducing an ordinance of Skip the Stuff. Number of towns, there's now been over a dozen in New Jersey, Jersey City, we'll be introducing in a couple of weeks. Customers don't get that unnecessary plastic that's causing mental health issues, that's causing cancers and infertility issues, and the environment wins. So I just would like to thank you very much for your time and answer any questions, if you have any. Thank you.
Ken Wolfski?
Ken Wolfski, 219 Woodside Avenue in the city. I've been in RN for 48 years here in New Jersey, and I've treated patients in Trenton in a wide variety of situations. I worked for four years at Trenton Psychiatric Hospital, four years at New Jersey State Prison at Trenton. I was intensive care unit and coronary care unit nurse at Mercer Medical Center when it was on Bellevue Avenue. And I also worked as a public health nurse in the City of Trenton. In 2003, I co-founded the Coalition for Medical Marijuana in New Jersey. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit educational organization. We were instrumental in getting the original medical marijuana bill introduced into the legislature in 2005 and passed into law in 2010. I'm here to comment on proposed ordinance 24024, that makes it unlawful to smoke marijuana in public places in the city, unless you have a medical, CRC, medical marijuana ID card. That makes it consistent with the Jay Koenig Law, which allows for medical marijuana to be smoked anywhere in the state of New Jersey that cigarettes are allowed to be smoked. The problem with this ordinance is that poor people don't have private places to go to to smoke their marijuana and achieve the medical benefits. They may be expelled from HUD or other subsidized housing. Their landlords may simply forbid the smoking of cannabis in their apartments. Or they may live in small apartments that have infants and small children or elderly people on oxygen, and would make it inappropriate for them to use them, to smoke their marijuana there. So who this is going to affect negatively are the marginalized, poverty-stricken residents in Trenton, the very people we're trying to lift up when we overwhelmingly voted to legalize marijuana in New Jersey in 2020. And we did this to stop the destructive effects of the war on drugs. And this law again, will again create police interactions with poor people. And when poor people can't pay their fines, yes, it calls for civil court, but if ultimately the civil court may lead to a criminal court if they, if the people are unable to pay the fines. So I urge the city council to reject this proposed ordinance 24042. And thank you for your attention.
Hold on, there's a couple of scratch outs. Garrett Windly?
Good evening, council. I'm Garrett Windly, 267 Bellevue Avenue. I've been in Trenton for 17 years, moved from Brooklyn. I love Trenton. It's like my home now. I emailed Ms. Frisbee a lot about the adjacent property, city-owned. Over the last four years, the tree has fallen into my yard, messed up my pool. It's done a lot of damage. And the response I get when I came to City Hall was COVID, COVID, COVID. I understand that it was bad for everybody, but now it's time to move on. And also, as that property is next to mine, I've been upkeeping it, mowing the grass, doing the edging just to make it look good, because it's a dead stick. And right in that same building, we have bricks falling down right in my alleyway from that building. We got raccoons living in there, kids are playing on the porch, it's bad, it's all over, it's bad. And I just feel a little disrespected, because I've been, you know, a good soldier to the city. I've been keeping up the property along with my neighbors. And I don't know what else to do. It's bad. It's like a forest in my backyard. I don't even want to go back there. It's horrible. And I haven't been in there, had a barbecue in four years. So that's just how I feel about that. I thank you for your help. And, you know, I know you guys are hands on time, but it's just, it's just hard. It looks crazy.
Can you tell us the name of the property again?
The property is 265 Bellevue.
265 Building is the one with the problem?
Right. And I put a tort claim in two years ago, but they denied it, said I waited too long. But the tree deteriorated over these four years, so I'm like, it's an ongoing problem. But they denied my claim. So that's, yeah.
Thank you.
Natasha Parker? Princess Jenkins?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Princess Jenkins, and I live at 455 West State. And my issue actually was somewhat addressed earlier with the Renters Committee that you guys are actually putting together. And it's about some of the people who live in my complex as well, with the high rent, the increase. So I kind of been doing like my research, calling City Hall, making sure that one, our seniors are aware of what's going on, our neighbors. So, and we have that issue as we have an absentee landlord. So they're not around, but we have a property manager that seems to have, I guess, like funnel all the phone systems to her and everything else, where we feel that she's not doing her just due. And so we're looking to make that change. I'm trying to do what I can to get the information, the ordinances out to my neighbors, so they are aware of what's going on in the city, how much they are supposed to pay versus the 7.89%, etc., that has been floating around. So having said that, again, I know like the committee, you know, you guys are going to vote on who's going to be on the committee. who's going to be on the committee, the rent committee. And I'm glad for that, because there definitely needs to be more communication. I think some of these absentee landlords need to be brought down for wherever they're from, if they are not in the city, and explain themselves and why they're not either aware of the ordinance, not following the policy, none concerned, or what else could be going on. Because you do have people who are paying their money, and things aren't getting fixed, things aren't being filed up on, and issues are not being addressed. So that's my piece. Again, I think you guys kind of did that at the very beginning of tonight, but I do thank you for that. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Leo Bridgewater.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leo Bridgewater. I live at 133 Jackson Street. I'm here to discuss ordinance number 24-042, the cannabis ordinance. Before I even say anything regarding that, I'd like to invite this body to just indulge me for a minute and turn around, look behind you, take a look behind, for real, look at that. You know what that is? It's a picture of industry. Okay, so I'm not here to talk about a grant or a program. I'm here to talk about an industry. One that produced $824 million in revenue for the state of New Jersey in just one year. The head of a billion-dollar-a-year industry is your constituent. The first ever Director of Diversity Inclusion for the state of New Jersey when it comes to cannabis is a Trentonian. You don't care? You don't even want to know him? She lives in your district. You don't even know her? So I just don't understand. Raise your hand if you knew that the Mercer County Airport is a foreign trade zone. Why are we not talking about import and export? Why are we not talking about industrial hemp? What we're talking about is poverty pimping. That's what the real industry is in Trenton is nowadays, poverty pimping. See, we can't really have the violence in the city go away, because if that goes away, if there's no gang violence, then we don't qualify for grants for gang violence. We don't have the whole thing with housing, it has to be this way. We can hoop and holler all day, but if we are not solutions-based, what are we doing? We're just spinning our wheels and doing the same thing. Again, I'm here to talk about industry. This is the joke. This is what they make fun about us for. Because everything that we do is in direct contradiction to poverty pimping. We're not really, if everyone in this city leveled up at least one, that's a lot of jobs that would go away. There are over 300 churches in this city and a couple of hundred 501(c)(3)'s. We should be the holiest city in the state, though we keep breaking up, we keep breaking our murder record. We want to go back to playing this out on our citizens.
Phil Charles.
Hello, council. My name is Phil Charles, residence of 32 Elmhurst Avenue in Trenton, New Jersey. Also owner of 13 West Front Street, downtown Trenton, New Jersey. I'm here today to address ordinance 24042, cannabis consumption. I've been a cannabis advocate within the city and the state for over 10 years. And I see this ordinance being counterproductive with the efforts that have been put forward through our state and our local initiatives to end cannabis arrests and also push for expunchements to help those that have already been previously impacted by cannabis prohibition. We, as Mr. Bridgewater just mentioned, we're looking to usher in a billion-dollar industry within our state, Trenton being the capital. This is obviously ground zero. I see it as one thing to address the illegal shops that are here in the city operating outside of our current ordinances. But it's another issue to address our residents who are either self-medicating or trying to find a way to help whatever it is that they are currently going through. I see that medical patients have a pass as far as consumption. But unfortunately, the medical patient count in the state has reduced just because it is a lot easier for individuals to be an adult consumer compared to register into the state database and becoming a patient with a monthly allotment that has to be completely renewed on a regular basis. As an advocate, I do not believe everywhere should just be a free-for-all. You know, we do have parks, we have children. And keeping our youth in this city in mind, our youth are the ones that are first more impacted when it comes to these type of regulations. And I know that firsthand, I've been arrested several times within the city as a youth growing up, which led to my advocacy and entrepreneur in the cannabis industry. I think where we are right now is we need more education, we need more awareness, we need more assistance and assistance with reversing all the damages that's previously happened with the cannabis prohibition.
Tanisha Page. Oh, excuse me, Darren Freedom Green.
Good evening, Council President, Council members. Darren Freedom Green, 875 New Willow. The immortal James Baldwin said it simply as this, when our faith is broken and the light goes out, we drown in the darkness. I'm struggling today, my faith is broken. I'm excited about the graduation tomorrow, which I'm sure all of you will attend. One of my little brothers, Andre, is a part of that, he's celebrating. But the young man that I brought to you, you introduced to you, and he stood here and talked about how excited he was to be transformational, part of the community, somebody who was all the way left, but now had an opportunity to come right. And now, week before he's supposed to graduate, he was removed from the process. I know you cannot comment on it, it's an investigation, all of that, but we are disgusted, we are broken-hearted behind this, and we want to stand and speak for him, because it is important. I'm his big brother in this community. When young black and brown males come to me and talk about doing right and getting their lives right, it's absolutely essential when we meet them in the crossroads of doing greatness that that happens. And when they are removed improperly for whatever it happens, I'm not beating up Director Douglas, I've worked with him on a number of issues, he's a righteous man. But whatever happened here is wrong. And for him to get to the point of graduating and now be removed, something happened that's foul. And what do we say to the community? And what do we say to young black and brown males who look at Ty and say, he was the one who was going to be the first who looked like us to become us, and we're chasing now that greatness that's now been taken away? One of the things Baldwin says is we stop dreaming because there's so much overwhelming disappointment. I just want you as council members, you're the advocates, you ran because you're the voice, you ran because you're speaking for the people, you ran because you want to shape policy to be better. And I think you've made this place better. Your professionalism is to be honored. But when one of your own gets done dirty, somebody has to speak up. Somebody has to say something and say, that's not right, and it can't happen on our watch. And I'm not going to stand by and allow it to happen, because he's counting on me to be the voice for the voiceless. And I hope that you address this issue in the process of the investigation. And I hope this is resolved in a manner where he can move forward and graduate as well. Because when you get your record right, and you do the things you're supposed to do, you should be able to gain the rewards you earned for. If his background was foul or funky or anything of that nature, he shouldn't have been allowed to participate in the process. But for him to get one week from the graduation, think about how he feels to now see people graduate. He's an honorable young black man, he's going to be there tomorrow to salute his cadets. But why should he not be a part of the transformation and change? When people keep stalking about how do we stop the killing and the craziness in the city? We have to stop killing off the dreamers who live in this. God bless you and thank you.
Tanisha Page.
Good evening, council. I'm speaking on behalf of Ty Page, the firefighter who went through the whole academy and who did very well. He was inspiration to the ones who was around him, and he's been an asset to the community. So it is with a great injustice that he's not able to graduate tomorrow. And I just think it's highly unfair. I think that he should be able to graduate, and I think that he should be the firefighter that he is destined to be. Thank you for your time.
Philip Roberts. Roberts.
Good evening, council. My name is Philip Roberts. I live at 26 Trent Street, Trenton, New Jersey. I've been living at that residence for the past 20 years and never saw it going down like this. I've been before you, last year, and the year before the last. And I told you about my prime, street getting deplorable. My wife is sick. I left home just to come to talk to you today again for the third time. I wish I knew the police director, but I spoke to the city mayor one time when my car was broken into last year. And the street, if you go there now, you will see more than 50 youth, adults, living, running around the street, abusing and saying all kinds of things. They even want to beat me because I'm talking against them. So I've come again for the second time. I'm begging you, please, as council people, and I don't know the police chief, but if he's here, or if his deputy is here, I would like for him to take drastic action on that street, because someone might lost their life, more than one, two, or three persons. So I beg that you go there, make some services, run our service, they call it decent living. We are not living decently on Trent Street. And last week, I met two officers. So I didn't know their position, I asked them, so do Trenton have, does Trenton have a community policing? He said, yes, old. Both of us at Trenton, I said, okay, then you are about quarter of a, I mean, 100 yards from my house. Walk on my street down and see the amount of people, you will see they're vigorous, smoking drugs, selling drugs, yelling, they don't go to bed at maybe 1:00 to 2:00 o'clock in the morning. So I'm begging, I even talked to a white hair or somebody in the police, they call wear house or wear hair or whole wear. And he promised me with the mayor that he would get rid of it. And it's been so long, they haven't gotten rid of it, and it's getting more and more complicated. So please help me and help my neighbor. Thank you.
Jalisa Rollins.
Good evening, council. I am Jalisa Rollins. My address is Tim Burton Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. I am also here to speak on behalf of Tashawn Page and his disqualification from the Fire Police Academy. I feel that what he's doing is commendable, it's positive, and it's productive. I don't believe his opportunity should be taken away due to a matter from his past when he has shown many efforts to improve and grow. I also feel that this being taken away from him may lead to discouragement for our youth. And I also feel that if he's granted the opportunity to graduate, that it can be shown as motivation and hope for our youth to know and understand that they can do anything that they put their minds to, and that crime does not have to take place. They can do something positive. And it only takes time and effort, which I feel Mr. Page has manifested. Thank you.
Tishawn Page.
Good evening, council. I'm Tashawn Page. I stand here before you again facing adversity. The program, when I first signed up to be a firefighter, I didn't think I had a chance to qualify. So I already had doubts going into it. So when I did get picked, I knew that this was my opportunity to change my life and the people around me, my family life, and just my community, period. And I had a rough in the beginning, because I had some adjustments to make. I know I'm not the perfect person. This is something new to me. I never ever thought I would be sitting in the room with the people that I was sitting in the room with. I also built bonds and relationships with people that I never thought I would build bonds with. But it gave me, so they speak on integrity. So integrity is everything. I learned integrity in there, I learned how to take accountability. These are things that I learned going through the things that I was going through in the academy. Despite me, I had about three, four deaths in the academy, but every day I still woke up and I put the work in that I had to put in. I never disobeyed the order. Whatever I was told, I did. First time they asked for somebody, stand up, can you come do this? I'm the first standing up. I was failing in the beginning, I'm not gonna lie, I was failing. But I got it together because it's something that I wanted. It was something that I wanted. I had sleepless nights studying, crying, sometimes it was so hard, I cried of frustration, because that's how bad I wanted to be there. And I just know that this was the opportunity of a lifetime, this is the best job in the world, right? So I wanted to do everything to show them that this is where I want to be. Even when they questioned, the things that questioned, when they did question it, I still got up the next day and did everything that I was supposed to do. No questions asked, no complaints. Even when I felt like they didn't want me there, there was times where I felt like I wasn't wanted. I got up every day and still did what I was supposed to do. I said, this is where I want to be, this is what I got to deal with, this is what I want. And just for me to get told that I have to resign an hour before I get my assignment with my classmates?
John Dockry.
Good evening, council. I'm John Dockry, I live in the South Ward, a cannabis owner, 28 South Warren Street.
Excuse me, Mr. Dockry, we need your actual physical address, please.
My physical address is 1036 Lamberton Street.
Thank you.
My business is 28 South Warren. I'm here today to come to you, to let you guys know, I feel like the city of Trenton has failed me. I've been open for 30 days, I've had to lay off every employee that I've had. I cannot compete with legal shops, because I can't sell cannabis for that price. Also feel like, as a whole, we're letting the city down because of the safety of the cannabis that these guys are selling. It's not tested, we don't know where it's from. We don't have no control over what's in it. We don't have no control over what's in it, nothing about it. I feel like the city should do something about it now instead of waiting until later. I've done everything the city asked me to do. I've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to open this business in my city. There's people here that run these shops that are not from my city. I would appreciate if the council would do something about it.
Let's see here, I apologize. Edwin Batsway.
Evening again, how are you guys doing? So just listening to some of the, oh, again, I'm sorry. Edwin Batsway, 71 Clark Street, Trenton, New Jersey. Yeah, so just listening to some of the issues that you guys have gone through tonight, going through the budget, hearing that we're about $12 million over budget and some of the other issues that are going on. I think that one of the solutions is kind of more of a question and a suggestion all in one, but as far as using housing to really alleviate some of the problems that we have in the city. I know Trenton owns a lot of properties that currently is either uninhabitable or just vacant at the moment. And I haven't seen anything thus far as far as any type of land bank or any type of process that's streamlined to allow people to buy some of these properties and build homes that they could actually now reside in, in the city. And I think there's a lot of evidence in areas like Detroit and Newark that have actually utilized the land bank to be able to revitalize a lot of neighborhoods and change the way a lot of these tougher neighborhoods look. So my suggestion would be to say we need to figure out a way to put together some type of land bank or some type of program that allows residents of the city or people looking to purchase a home or purchase land in the city to be able to do so without having to jump through a bunch of different hoops in order to acquire the properties. I think that the way people view their neighborhoods, the fact that people don't want to live in a neighborhood or live on the street where it has a bunch of abandoned houses, it affects the ability for someone to sell their home, how much they can sell their home for, for someone looking to move into the city, the fact that they're moving into a block that has four, five, six abandoned houses. It really makes it hard for people to look at the city as somewhere that they would like to call home. And as far, as long as I've been here, I've always looked at Trent as a major opportunity, given its location, it's centralized in the state. It gives someone an opportunity to work in North Jersey, South Jersey, can take the train to New York, to Philly. It really gives someone an opportunity to travel. And for a lot of young professionals that are looking to purchase their first home, affordability is a big issue across the state. I think a lot of people are moving out of other areas to New Jersey for that specific reason. And I think that right now, Trenton hasn't done much to be an attractive area for people to come to. As again, as a realtor, I've worked with people that can't afford anywhere else but still look at Trent as somewhere that they don't want to be. And I think that has to change. So I think that creating an opportunity for people to purchase some of these city-owned properties, we've had issues with other people that are saying some of these properties are now becoming an impediment on their own property. They're paying taxes, and now we're asking them to increase their taxes all while not handling a lot of these empty and vacant properties. So I think that, again, creating some type of program that allows people to purchase these properties and actually build homes on it is definitely something that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Holman.
Good evening, Council President, Council Vice President, Council members, concerned citizens. I'm here on behalf of Taishon Page.
Mr. Holman, if you could just state your address for the record, please.
Got you, 202 East Hanover, Trenton, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir.
But before I get into that, I want to thank y'all for not canceling a public comment. Y'all could have did that, that's y'all right. And so I'm so thankful that y'all allowed us to speak. I'm thankful that you allowed me to speak. I also want to stand with the cannabis advocates in the room. But, so I met Taishon Page in the mid-2000s at Bavaria Middle School. And so I'm a church boy. I come from a Holy Ghost household. And I say that to say that I've always had understanding, right? The Bible says, "And all thy getting get understanding," right? And so when I met Taishon Page, there was something about him, right? And then I quickly realized that God had His heavenly hand on his life, that He had a plan for him to make him something great, right? And so the Bible also says that, and I learned this when I was a young man, and I followed this, and this is what has made me successful in my life, that the wise walk with the wise. And so I quickly started running and walking with Taishon. And so what I realized was that through playing football and playing sports and hanging around in class, that he was a leader at a young age. And he had high class and high honor, and that he was a good man and somebody who could be looked up to. And so in this situation, right, we, I don't know everything that happened in this situation. It seems like it is unjust, right? And we want to remedy that situation. But what I'm asking this body, right, what I'm asking this body to do, like everybody in here is doing, right? I'm asking this body to stand up for this black man, right? Because he had an opportunity. He got the opportunity. He was worried about the opportunity, right? He went through it, and then he almost made it to the end and didn't make it through. That is devastating to us black men in the city. In this city, in this country, in this world, black men have been left behind, and we do not want to leave Taishon Page behind either. So I urge this body to stand up. Whatever you have to do, if you have to open up a council inquiry, if you have to talk to some people, whatever you have to do to support this young man, please do so. Thank you.
Keon Jones.
Keon Jones.
Good evening, Council. Good to see you all. I'm here to advocate for Taishon Page. As you all know, I am working for the Trent Restore the Street team. That's what I'm here for. But I'm also a firefighter. And it's unfortunate when you see things like this happen. Taishon is a city guy. We have a lot of people that are not from the city that are on the fire department. So I think it's important to keep city guys, especially someone of his magnitude, who's a pillar in his community. And the people, there's just not a loss for him. This is a loss for his community. When I think about me being a firefighter in our class, almost 12 years ago, in 2013, we had one of the most popular classes. And we, you know, made it popular to be a firefighter with how many city guys that were on the department. Taishon doesn't have a criminal background. The fire department took the posture of being judged during execution, and that's just foul. And our union failed him. They told him that it would behoove him to resign, which was wrong. Our union president is supposed to be hanging out with our upper leadership. That defeats the purpose of having a union. You know, so it's a lot of faultiness. And I just think, what are the next steps? I mean, I got the, I emailed the chief of staff. I went through all the proper channels and then trying to help this young man get back on the fire department. But before I even say that, we got people that are criminals on the fire department. As you know, I was stabbed at work. There's somebody, another fireman stabbed me at work. And then our leadership honors this dude. Our leadership gives him plaques. Our leadership is incompetent right now. And that's a reflection of what's going on. So what are the next steps? Or what can we do to get someone at the table to properly examine this? Because this is unfair. This is unfair what's happening to this young man. And it isn't right. So that's my question. I mean, I emailed the mayor, the chief of staff. The NSACP is going to get involved. Like, but before we go, and we also have a petition that started four hours ago, and it already has over 1,200 signatures already from the city. So the city is backing this guy. They believe in him. I believe in him. What are the next action steps that we can take to get this tabled?
Kevin Blake.
How you doing? My name is Kevin Blake. I live at 875 Stavison Avenue, Trenton, New Jersey. Productive member of society. How you doing, councilors? You know, in the process of me being a productive member of society, I ran into a little bump in the road with the Water Works, Trenton. And last year, in one quarter, my bill went up $6,000. I'm like, wow, $6,000? I don't have a leak in my home or nothing. So I go and they send me a shut-off notice. The lady gave me it to the 12th of this month, but on the 1st, they shut my water off. So I go and look on the back of the shut-off notice where it tells me to go and get this form to fill out so I can have a hearing. So I goes there on Cortlandt Street, and I talked to different people, like managers. And no one knows where this form is at and how I can get a fair hearing because the guy who came out to do my leak check, he the one told me, look, the meter is still running. I did my leak check, you don't have no leak. The meter is running. So I'm not gonna go all into everything. I just need some help. Just, like I said, it's just a little bump in the road. And I need some help getting this form. It's right on the shut-off notice, right on the back. I went, I talked to Michael. I talked to Dana, Dinah. I even talked to this guy right here one time. He helped me out because they didn't want to give me no paperwork or nothing so I could take to legal aid or to a lawyer. But when he got involved, what's your name, sir? When Sean Simple got involved, then they gave me paperwork so I could take to legal aid and stuff like that. But I'm still having problems getting the form. How could you help me? My phone number is 609-817-5267. Again, my phone number is 609-817-5267. I stay at 875 Stavison Avenue. I am a home, a proud homeowner, and I need help because I feel like I've been taken advantage of. And then they gave me one year to pay the $6,000. They want me to pay almost $400 a month. And then when I called to get the meter out of my house, they didn't do a reading for five years. They went back five years on me. Why y'all didn't come out to me? I'm thinking, because I'm fresh homeowner, I'm thinking it's just the regular price for water. They was charging me $350 every quarter.
Thank you, sir. It sounds like they were doing estimated readings and then changed something around into the actual. So the director, Sean Simple, is here. If it's okay with BA Cruz, you can give or exchange information with the director, and then he can maybe assist and tell you where to get that form from, right? So they move when he speaks because he's the director, okay? Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Certainly. Quay Sean Williams.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing today? My name is Quay Sean Williams. Address is 1078 Leila Street, Trenton, New Jersey. I'm here on behalf of two of my friends today for public support. The first one I'm gonna talk to and speak to is Taishon Page. Now, I don't know Taishon that well. We got to know each other right before we had a celebrity basketball game, and we did a Neighborhood Hero Award Ceremony. And it was very important for us to watch Taishon come from his background, just like many of our peers, and make it through his background, make it to the other side, put in a lot of work to be a firefighter in his community. And he's a leader in his community. A lot of people follow Taishon. So the whole city is heartbroken right now after hearing the news on what happened today. So it was, I had to come and speak on behalf of him because just to see that, to see everybody, if it's 1,000 people cheer him on as we honor him as a Neighborhood Hero, it sets a precedence that a lot of people who follow him, it's almost like watching, you know, him fall. A lot of people lose hope. So I just wanted to publicly support him. And then, secondly, my friend John, Mojo Life Dispensary on Warren Street. I own a business on Warren Street. A lot of my focus right now is revitalizing downtown. And I've already moved three of my friends downtown, so they're all business owners down there. But to watch John, you know, build his business from the ground up, come from the legacy side, establish an actual dispensary and how the city is not upholding the laws and allowing other dispensaries that are not legal to be able to thrive while he's struggling. He had to lay off his whole entire staff, and I'm watching it, I'm building relationships with these people. He had to lay off his whole entire staff. Now he's operating his business with just him. It's disheartening. And to see it, you know, I couldn't just stand by the wayside and just watch it. I believe it's striftenumber. So I'm hoping that the city, the fire department, I know Mr. Douglas. Mr. Douglas is a great man. I'm hoping that everybody could find time to show them some grace. So, thank you.
Good, Madam President. That is all the public comment individuals that I have. If it's your wish, you can start with any council member you wish for civic comments.
Thank you. In light of the fact that we did cut public comment down to three minutes, I'm just asking my council colleagues to speak between the three and five minutes. If you could say it within three, I appreciate it. If you cannot, then we'll still stay with the five. But I just wanted to put that out there. I'm asking that we kind of amend it to three to five, okay? Thank you. Councilwoman Edwards.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council President. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I just want to commend everyone that came out and stood up for Taishon Page. I just want to say, first and foremost, it's disheartening to hear what happened. I'm not sure of all of what transpired that led to that unfortunate decision. But for someone to be right at the finish line and someone trip you when you thought you were about to make it is very unfortunate. It's a very heartbreaking feeling that I'm sure many of us black and brown people have experienced throughout our lives. And that is a common experience that we need to just get away from and figure out how we can help our people. So I'm praying that there is a favorable outcome to this situation. And I can't speak for this entire council, but we do our jobs. We are very nosy, for lack of a better word, and we ask questions, and we will get to the bottom of it. And I assure you, we will find out what happened. Whether we can... I'm not promising that any decisions will be overturned, but this definitely did not fall on deaf ears, and we will do our due diligence. Secondly, I want to thank the administration for the introduction of the budget this evening. Very pleased to hear that we got $47 million in transitional aid and capital city aid, though I definitely sympathize with the sentiments of my colleagues that we are owed more than that, and our city needs the help. And with that being said, we had a gentleman tonight that spoke about land banking. That is something that the administration tried to push under the previous council, and I'm hoping that the administration brings back for, under this council, and help the city to understand what land banking is and how that could be a turning point for our city the way that Newark did. We can take a page from their book. We have thousands of city-owned property, which is the issue that is causing the biggest deficit in our city. When we don't have revenue from these properties, we can't use that funding. So we have to get our city-owned properties back on a tax roll so that we can provide the services that our city needs. I want to say thank you to the Salvation and Social Justice Street Team for the week of shalom and peace, specifically speaking about the gun violence vigil tonight. As you all know, we're at our 13th murder this year. And that's not in regard to how many shootings, which were more than that. So I want to say, please find peace. Please find it in your hearts to put the guns down. And if anyone in here knows anyone that is following that wrong path, please try to steer them in the right directions. We have two street teams in the city that is hands-on in our neighborhoods, and direct them to them for the help and services that they need. And lastly, I want to speak on the cannabis issue that we have in the city. I want to go on record again to say I do not support the 24-042 ordinance to amend the cannabis thing to make cannabis pretty much illegal again. We went through a lot to decriminalize and legalize cannabis on a recreational medicinal level in the state of New Jersey, and in turn, hundreds of people were released from prison. Thousands of people's records were in sponge, and they have gained employment after that, that they did not have access to before, to make livable wages. We cannot revert back to these laws that we had before under New Jersey, and that is what I fear that this will do. Increasing fines and banning cannabis in certain areas or saying that they have to have a medicinal card, a medical card, to even use it, it contradicts what our state law says. And I would advise against it. So, and that brings me to my last point. These illegal shops are hurting our community. We cannot trust the cannabis that is being sold there, and it is harming our existing now-legal businesses, and we need to shut them down. And I know this has been addressed with the administration before, but I hope that something has been going on, some progress has been being made, so that we can shut them down and so that our legal businesses can thrive.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman President?
Thank you, Council Vice President. So, good evening, everyone, and thank you to all that have come out this evening. This has been quite the evening. I want to first start off by saying thank you to our departments for... Thank you, Mr. Cruz and Mr. Collins for presenting the budget to us this evening. I appreciate that. I appreciate your diligence in working to get this to us and getting the numbers that we have gotten. So thank you so very much for that. And we appreciate you, Mr. Cruz, on different levels. So you know that, and you know how I feel, and I appreciate you. So thank you very much for that. I want to also address a little, Bradley. You have been here several times. I'm hopeful that you will be able to get a better quality of life in your neighborhood. No one should be harassed. No one should have to be concerned about whether or not they are going to be able to sleep at night, when there is a noise ordinance. You may want to ask about that when you are calling the police department, but just keep working at it. I would be diligent in it. Don't stop, be dogmatic if you need to be. Manuel Licia, who is not here, I have gotten every one of his emails, and there have been numerous ones of those. Every single last one of them with the pictures have been forwarded to the various departments, and I have followed up on them. I can't move the dial. Only thing I can do is forward the dial, and I can be persistent. And I do feel bad for his residents. He does have a great deal of elderly, and I want to make sure that they feel that they are being hurt and being paid attention to. So I am urging our departments. I know we are backed up. If they can just give the updates where we're sending these emails to you, I would greatly appreciate it. I know my constituents would do the same. I want to address Mr. Garrett. The damage to your property, I'm sorry for it. You should not have to be going through that, and you have been a good neighbor. You've been good to the city. So thank you for what you've done, and I hope that we can do better by you with getting the property that belongs to us taken care of, so that you don't have to live in a condition that is just unsavory to be a part of. Same thing with Mr. Phil Roberts. I am so sorry for what's going on in your community. We should not, your wife, your residents should not be going through all that they're going through. Folks just being disrespectful and dismissive of what is going on with your life. I want to address Tashawn. We don't have all the facts, but I have seen you in the community. I have seen the great work that you have been doing, and I have high hopes. I want to encourage you in what you're doing. Don't give up, don't get weary and well-doing. You will reap. We don't know what all happened, what all transpired, but I'm crazy enough to believe that it can turn itself around and that right can come out of this. On your behalf, don't be discouraged. You said, I know that there are folks who, you weren't doing well in the beginning, and you could have dropped it, you could have put it down and left it, but you persisted, and you kept on. And you are that story that we want. You're that comeback story. We want you to stay in the game. Don't be discouraged, be encouraged. And just know that there are others who are watching, and I'm hopeful that our city will do what is necessary so that we can get this together. And I thank you for being out here. I thank everyone that spoke on his behalf. It took a lot. So I want to thank each and every one of you who came out here and spoke on his behalf. It wasn't easy. Some of you just are in different places, different positioning. So I'm grateful for that. The cannabis issue, 24-042. I am not for criminalizing our recreation, and that's what it feels like right now. We have to give some alternative. It doesn't make sense for us to say, okay, we're gonna legalize cannabis, but we can't, we're not gonna make it legal for you to smoke it. Where do you have to go? Can't do it in public, can't do it in private, can't do it... So we have to work on that. That's something I think we just need to tweak out so that we can come to an agreement, so that we can all be in a good place. So, again, I'm confident. I'm crazy enough to believe that we can work it out so that it works for both the residents as well as the rest of the city, so that we are not on each other's toes. And with that, I have the watershed. I'm Kevin Blake. I did see you, I did hear you. I'm running out of my time right now, and I do want to just say, I want to read the part of our mission statement that says, "Recognizing that the people of Trenton have made its guardians of the public trust, we are committed to govern with integrity and fiscal responsibility to seek excellence in the city's operations and to serve all the city's people with respect and compassion. I wish everybody well, and I am hopeful and I'm optimistic we're gonna get it together as a city." Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, everyone, for being present. Thank you to all of those who came and spoke. I want to say thank you to our administration for fighting for us to get more money in our budget. So I want to say thank you to you and the DCA. As my colleague stated, we do deserve more, but we are going to take what we can get as of right today. I appreciate that increase from last year to this year. So thank you for that. I also want to say thank you again for working diligently for us to get the stabilization board going, because that is a critical issue in our city, and it is really affecting a lot of our tenants, a lot of our residents, and our landlords. And so I want us to have a fair and fair, open process for both tenants and landlords here in our city of Trenton. Mr. Cruz, thank you for all of your work. And Mr. Colin Cherry, I want to say thank you, Mr. Cruz. I know this is the last time you're presenting a budget to us. As far as the land bank discussions, that has been something that has been brought up, so I am looking forward to that hopefully coming forth to us in the future, in the next year or two, so that our residents are educated on how that can be beneficial for all of us here in the city of Trenton. Mr. Dagory, I am so sad to hear about what you just reported on today, and we are trying to see how we can get these illegal shops shut down. So just know that we are working on that. To all of the other residents, there was a couple that spoke, Mr. Bradley, Mr. Philip, Mr. Garrett. Please know that we are listening. We appreciate you coming to share your concerns and the things that are going on, because we are taking notes and definitely will be following up on those issues that you guys share with us. In regards to Mr. Tashawn... Tashawn, I've known Tashawn since he was about 13, 12, 13 years old, I want to say. And I've seen this young man grow. I know the challenges that he has faced, and I know that we are not perfect. And I know we can't speak on much of what is being, the decision that was made. I just want to personally say that I wish a decision would have been made after the final investigation was complete and not prior to. So, that's that. I just want to also shout out our Trenton Housing Department. They have been working really, really hard for us to get the Choice Neighborhood Grant Program, and that is $50 million that we are hoping to get the approval on, and hopefully we'll get a confirmation on that this month, in July, as to whether or not we will receive that, which will be beneficial to our North Ward and helping to revitalize the city as a whole. So I just want to shout them out, because they work really, really, really hard on trying to obtain that grant. Shouting out Salvation Social Justice with the week of shalom. As you all know, we've had events all week, every day this week promoting peace. And I just want to say thank you, because they worked really, really hard. Tomorrow, we will be having the flag football game at Trenton Central High School Friday nights under the lights. Shout out to Keon. I know he was one of the ones coordinating that. I will also be partnering with them, and my team hopefully will be taking the victory. I got some surprise team members that are gonna show up and show out. So also, we also have a citywide cleanup that was announced. I'm gonna give you some of the wards and the dates. We're starting in August. Oh, I was gonna say, I have it on my phone. August 3rd is South Ward, North Ward is August 10th, East Ward is August 17th, and West Ward would be August 24th. And you are allowed to get rid of your yard waste and furniture removals. Please know that, and we know that this is not gonna fix every trash issue that we have in the city, but it is a start. It is for somewhere for us, for our residents to put these big bulk items out and get picked up. But we also got to do our part too, as residents, because I'm driving down the street, and I'll see someone toss a whole bag of garbage right out in front of me, and it's just like, I'm arguing with people in the middle of the street. So we all got to do our part. You know, you see it, we got to say something. So just please keep in mind that we are trying to do our best here in the city, but we also need it to be a partnership between us and the residents here in the city. I think that was all of my announcements. I just want to say thank you all for being present, and good night.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Council President. First of all, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Lot of, a lot going on, a lot of serious stuff. Lot of business for the city, but also some announcements, and I want to share some also. Just want to congratulate Salvation Social Justice and the Restorative Street Team for a very successful week of shalom so far. I've been able to attend two events, the prayer vigil, as well as one a few days ago at the Father's Center for returning citizens, which was also attended by FedEx, Domino's Pizza, the City Office of Returning Citizens, State of New Jersey Health Department, the Latino, Latin American Legal Defense and Education Fund, and many other groups. And also Brother Gene Bowie did an excellent presentation on obtaining job skills and how to incorporate skills that folks already have. And you can see from those in attendance that it meant a lot for them to be there, to be respected, to see that they do have a second chance and have awaits for it. So it was an honor to be there. I have a couple announcements additionally. The North Ward Citizens Police Advisory Council, the next meeting will be on June 24th, 5:30, Galley Baptist Church. Please attend. We're gonna have a special guest, Officer Nathan Davis, who's a chaplain for the Trenton Police Department, to find out more about what they do, how they work with the department, work with the community. I also, as far as some business tonight, I want to thank the administration and the fire director for the resolution appropriating money for the concrete for the two firehouses. So we have those floors fixed, because that's been an ongoing issue. So thank you very much. Also, for Ms. McCoy, she's not here with the Watershed Institute. It was good to have her here, because she wanted to start getting word out into the community about some of the water issues that are happening, how Trenton could be incorporated into that. So I am sure we will be hearing more from her, and I look forward to the administration partnering with the watershed. Ms. Clark from Pine Street, Ms. Janelle, I would like to speak with you at some point, if you could. So please, let's get in touch with each other to see if we can find out what happened, why the taxes are going up so much, and see if we can hopefully find a solution for you. So we don't want you to leave Trenton. We'd love to have you be able to stay, ma'am. Regarding what situation is, with Tashawn, can't really say too much, because we don't have, there's illegal parameters, which is assured people could appreciate. But we did meet Tashawn last year, when he came to city council and spoke to us about what had happened to him previously. He was unfairly arrested and wanted to become a firefighter. And it was really an amazing story, and it was really powerful to hear his journey and what he wanted to do. So I am hoping that there can be a resolution in some way. We have to get all the information. As my colleague said, we're very nosy. I'd like to say we're very thorough, but she's right, we are nosy. But we will do everything we can to make sure we get all the facts and we help make whatever involvement we have to be, to be a righteous involvement. So I just have a couple last things. I just want to echo about the citywide cleanup. It is really important. We, it is a team effort. There are flyers back there you can get from our very awesome security guard, who's here with us, officer. And also, he has copies of the summer programs from the Department of Natural Resources. And you'll see all kinds of events that are going on in the city, from basketball to movies under the stars, to the swimming pools, to dancing, painting, summer teen programs, concert series, take it to the streets. There's so much going on that's positive in this city. We need to embrace it. But the big thing we need, from everyone in this room to people watching and streaming, is when we get information like this, please help us spread the word. One of the things I've learned on council in the last two years is we're not as connected as the city as one would think in an age where we all have cell phones and computers in our cell phones and cameras in our cell phones. We really need to talk to each other, word of mouth. Tell our neighbors, if you get some flyers, please help hand them out to other folks. There's always a mayor of the block. So if you're that mayor of the block, please tell everyone on your block. And if you know the mayor of your block, then make sure they know, because someone's always out front, either watering flowers or walking a dog and can help us get word. That's important. So God bless everybody. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for loving our city so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Council Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna try to adhere to the three minutes or under as all of you guys were held to. My colleagues pretty much said everything that needed to be said. I'm really excited that so many people were here this evening, although, you know, it's disappointing at times that we have so many concerns for the city. But, you know, we say time and time again, there are so many issues. There's 92,000 people in the city of Trenton, you know, and only a fraction of people who are able to do the work and tries to get the things done to get us to a place where we need to be, where we are functioning to a capacity where we deserve, where our quality of life has reached a level where we deserve. And that is something that we are tirelessly working toward to try, you know, us hand in hand with the administration. And, you know, we welcome when the public comes to us with concerns, and we're able to kind of, you know, get some things to the front of the line to get rectified. But that's one thing, two things, 10 things of 1,000 things that are concerning in the city that we're trying to rectify. And, you know, we keep saying this as a mantra, you know, we can get things fixed and we can have the city come out, but at the same time, it also starts with us, and we need to hold ourselves more and more accountable as we move forward. For those of you who are here, again, there are directors here who can address some of your concerns that you address in front of everybody. So I do encourage those to introduce yourselves to some of the directors and talk personally, one-on-one with some of them to try to get answers to some of your questions as we also work to try to rectify some of these issues. Some issues are more difficult than others to rectify. We all up here on council have been on both sides of the fence. We have been in your seats, and now we're on this side. So we know what it's like to have complaints and feel like we are not being, our concerns are not being answered, and we are not given proper care and concern. Basically, uh I just wanted to kind of go back to um Councilwoman Gonzalez mentioned that we just, we just did a um a press conference yesterday. We do have cleanups in all four of the wards. There are so many eyesores throughout the city. Um people with their backyards filled with debris and garbage. Um neighbors don't need to see that sometimes. Lot, side lots, front of houses, things like that. This is the opportunity to clean out your house, clean out the side of your house, clean out your backyard, help your neighbors possibly, bring all this stuff to the forefront to get picked up. Um and just, you know, try to maintain that um for your homes, for your neighbors and for our quality of life throughout the city. Um I'd like to see these illegal marijuana shops be shut down and not be able to operate. As many of you have said, I too agree that 24 dash zero four two um should not be passed. Uh I do not agree with it. Um we can't legalize and then criminalize at the same time. It just, in my mind, it just does not make sense. Moving forward, I'm glad that, you know, um folks came forward to speak on behalf of Taishan Page. I am uh an investigator in capacity, um professional capacity for 22 years. So I will not formulate any opinion till I know all the facts um moving forward. So with that, I want to thank you all for coming out. Um it's been, I'm, I'm glad you all have survived the heat wave. We have a few more days of this and please take care and have a wonderful night.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you to those that stayed here tonight. Thank you to those that spoke tonight. Certainly, we had a very meaty and lengthy um docket tonight. We're on our summer schedule, so hence we're doing double duty on tonight. Everybody presented something important. I'm not going to go back over what it is that my colleagues have already said. We will be looking into things. Please don't think that your words have fallen or are falling on deaf ears. They are not. When it comes to the um illegal cannabis operations that are happening, trust and believe I've had meetings with um the mayor legal, with our clerk, with others about what is going to be done and when is it going to happen? So those discussions are being had. Um and I know that they're working on formulating or finalizing a plan that they're going to be taking care of not only illegal dispensaries, but also illegal businesses that are open in the city, period. It's not fair to anyone that actually goes through the proper protocol and steps that they should be limited or penalized to having to lay people off while other people thrive and get what it is that they're getting out of the situation. So that is being looked into. Shout out to Salvation Social Justice, the Trent Restored Street Team. They've had, you know, they, they brought forth the week of shalom. Shout out to Pastor Antonio Bellamy and his wife, First Lady Diane. Shout out to Keon Jones and the rest of the team on the tremendous work. They've done prayer vigils, flag raisings, um the job fair, they're having a color run at Catwinder Park this Saturday from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. And then Sunday, they're doing a citywide peace walk at Mill Hill Park. And everybody, they're convening from different areas throughout the city and they're gonna walk and they're gonna meet at Mill Hill Park. I was able to attend several of their events. Um and they have been spectacular along the way. So we thank you for those tremendous efforts and look forward to what is to come. I do want to say thank you to Business Administrator Cruz. Thank you, sir, for your service to the city of Trenton. I know that this will be your last um council meeting with the city. We thank you for hanging in there with us for your time, for your tenure. We thank you for your service. Know that we appreciate you. You'll be missed when you go, but that you were of value to us here on council um and getting us acclimated and getting us in the groove in, in what it is that we needed to do to be effective and to be better. So we thank you for your time, your talent and your service. Thank you, Mr. Cruz. We wish you the very best and continued blessings on your journey, um even though you chose to abandon us. So, life goes on. We thank you. We thank.
You could come back, same.
We thank you. That's right. All right. So I do, I do want to say um I'm gonna stop here. Well, no, I'm not. If Mr. Koloji walks a little bit faster, then I'll close out with what it is I have to say. Mr. K, can you walk a little bit faster? Just a little bit faster. Just a little bit faster. So I just want everybody to know that we have a star among us. I call him the godfather of law. So Mr. Koloji was named um in the, in the 2024 Insider Edition of the 100 Legal Power List. Mr. K came in at number 19. So let's give it up to Mr. Koloji. Oh, yeah. Contrary to popular belief, he does have his own practice too, but he's our lawyer. So. So congratulations, Mr. K, and thank you for everything that you do um for, for in helping council and getting us on track and for the city of Trenton. We really do appreciate you and everything that you do um for and with us. With regards to Taishan, I'm gonna say this. We are looking into it. That's where I'm leaving it. Okay? So we are looking into it. It's not on deaf ears. Again, um as my counterpart, Council Vice President said, I too have investigative experience. Um we're gonna listen to what it is. We're gonna see what it is and it's gonna be what it's gonna be, right? But if anything unfair was done, um you know, that, that will come out in the wash, but I'm going to say that um with, with our director that heads up the fire department, um Director Douglas has done a stellar job thus far, in my opinion, with the things that he has done. Um and so we will look and see and listen and hear about what happened. If anything can be done, then if the administration decides that that is a direction in which they will go, then that is the direction that they will go. All right? But we wish you the very best and everything. That being said, thank you, everybody, for coming out. God bless and good night and we'll see you at our next meeting in August. Mr. Garcia.
Certainly, Madam President, moving on with the agenda. Uh if you, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve the minutes of April 2nd, April 4th, April 16th, May 9th, May 21st and May 23rd.
May I have a motion to approve all the minutes mentioned by uh Clerk Garcia?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes. Excuse me, everybody, don't leave yet. Everybody, don't leave yet. I am so sorry. Councilman Harrison, um I want to give you the right to have your public comment, um, um, your civic comment. I'm so sorry. Did you want to say anything? Put them about anything?
I was just gonna wish Mr. Uh Adam Cruz the best. You've been awesome. You've been uh a pillar for this great city and uh been a pleasure working with you. So I wish you nothing, you and your family, nothing but the best.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, y'all. Y'all can go if you want to go. Just wanted to make sure if he had anything to say. All right, Mr. Garcia, continue. Thank you. Can you turn your mic on, Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, I could definitely do that. I'm sorry, Madam President. My apologies. If you would ask for a motion to approve communications and petitions, communications, petitions and reports.
Yes, may I have a motion to approve communications, petitions and reports? So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to ordinances for second reading and public hearing. Ordinance 24 dash 27, bond ordinance providing for roadway repairs in various areas serviced by Trenton Waterworks, including by and in the city of Trenton in County of Mercer, State of New Jersey, appropriating $5 million therefore and authorizing the issuance of $5 million of bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this ordinance at this time? Seeing none, Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve.
May I have a motion to approve? So moved.
Second.
Noted. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. On to resolutions. Madam President, at this time, we did have some items that were listed for consent, which I could recite. However, are there any other items from the council that the council wishes to isolate from a consent agenda at this time?
Mr. Garcia, just a quick point of order in, in the um agenda 24 to 71, that amount needs to be corrected to 100,000 from the funds allocated to the city of Trenton.
Ooh, okay, yes, that's makes a big difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Noted.
At this time, council, also, I just want to make it known, um and it, it was uh placed on there um after the fact when we were looking at DACA review. 24 to 70, the resolution um of the city supporting the revolution uh New Jersey. It was actually, it was Councilwoman Tessa T. Frisbee. So we have that noted on there that actually presented that to us um for consideration. And then the administration went ahead. I had looked back in time at emails that we had gotten before. So I like to have our council members get credit for um the great works that they bring forward. So thank you for that, Councilwoman Frisbee. It is noted as such on the um, on the resolution. At this time, are there any questions from council about any of the resolutions there before we look to move to consent agenda?
Council President.
Yes.
Uh 24 to 75.
24 to 75. Okay.
And then, pardon me. 24 to 88. And uh that would cover the next set of resolutions, 24 to 89, 290. Cause my question would just be about the financing.
Okay.
But you, I will say 288, ma'am.
Okay, so we have 24 to 75, 24 to 88, 289 and 290?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Any other council members with any resolutions that you would like to discuss before we move to consent agenda?
Actually, if I could add 291. Would you add 291 also?
And 291. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So again, we want the public to know that we just don't overlook stuff and just let it slide. Um we ask very concise questions when we meet with the administration and everything is funneled through to our council colleagues and we ask questions um, you know, all along the way before we even get here tonight. So please don't think that we don't ask questions. The questions are being asked. Okay? So we will begin with 24 to 75.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Uh so Director Wilson, my question actually lies for 75 and 76. It's the same financing source. Uh so I just wanted, if you could just highlight uh this grant program and the purpose of it.
Steve Wilson, Police Director. Um sure, Councilwoman, um 275 and 276 are uh grants from the federal government um awarded through the county to the city of Trenton, um Hamilton Township as well. And what it is for is for items that we will utilize in fight, for anti-violence fight and uh for items such as um laptops, cameras, that we would be utilized by our, by our uh shooting response team, our crime suppression units, specialized, not just regular um uh IT equipment that we would normally have for the department, but it has to be for specialized uh anti-violence initiatives. And that's for both of them.
Oh, okay. And then uh just real quick, uh because they list 2021 and 2022, are these monies that we were owed previously? Just?
Uh yes, these are reimbursements for the things that we've purchased already. Um however, um because of issues that were beyond the city of Trenton with, that had to deal with the county and, and uh whatever's going on over there, it was kind of delayed.
Understood. Thank you very much, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So Councilwoman Williams, when you're finished asking the questions, please let us know if we can go ahead and move the item back to consent. So we can go on consent?
Yeah, please, yes, consent. Sorry.
Thank you.
Don't answer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. 24 to 88, 289, 290 and 291. Good evening. It's not, you can't press it in?
That's a faulty wire.
Don't doctor me.
He was, he was pressing it. Okay, Councilwoman.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh so Director Anatiri, my question has to do with, I was actually pleased to see these, but um seeing that the uh revenue source or the financial source is listed as awarded through County of Mercer Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Agreement for 88, 89, 90 and 91, um is that cooperative, a contract purchasing system agreement? Is that a new um financing source or funding source? Or is that something that existed previous to the year and the current county administration?
Uh no, this is nothing new. This is the Massa County Co-op that would go through when it's time to get something like this. So this is something that is always been there.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
All right. Uh I just wanted to make sure because uh these are substantial amounts of money that we absolutely need for roof repairs, including this building. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh we can return to consent, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Mr. Anatiri.
Mr. Anatiri.
Director.
Regarding the roof, um are you planning on um working on the atrium on the first floor? Because you know how it's.
Yes.
The leak.
Yes, that is part of the, the whole building.
That is, okay. Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd also want to thank you and the administration. We had talked back and forth about the roof um in here. And thank you for setting aside the funds, right, and, and making this happen so that everyone here is safe and so that uh we don't have any issues, right? Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. That being said, can I have a motion to approve the following on consent agenda? Resolution 24, well, this is, I'm gonna restate the ones that we did and just keep moving straight through. Is that okay? Thank you. 24 to 43, 24 to 44, 245, 246, 247, 248, 270, 271, 272, 273, 274, 300, 301, 302, 275, 276, 277, 278, 279, 280, 281, 282, 283, 284, 285, 286, 287, 88, 89, 90, 91, 92, 93, 94, 95, 96, 99, 97, 98. May I have a motion to approve those on consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who was the second?
Frisbee.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to ordinances for first reading and introduction. President, uh ordinance 24 oh four two, ordinance creating chapter 48 of the Code of the City of Trenton entitled Cannabis Consumption. Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion to approve this resolution, first reading?
Council President, if I may.
Yes.
Administration's gonna pull that.
Thank you. That's why I was hesitating.
Noted.
Uh that's why I was quiet. I was looking down. I was waiting for it. Thank you.
Noted, it's pulled by law. Thank you. Ordinance 24 dash zero four five, ordinance authorizing the sale of city-owned property, commonly known as 217 Bruning Avenue, and identified on the city tax map as block 22801, lot 9, pursuant to NJSA 40A colon 1213B5 to Nilsa Reyes for the sale price of 400, oh, excuse me, $4,000.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Noted, roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24 dash 48, capital ordinance appropriating $10,651,800 from the Capital Improvement Fund to pay for various improvements and acquisitions for and by the city of Trenton in County of Mercer, State of New Jersey.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, Council, Councilwoman Frisbee.
Forgot me. Yes.
I'm sorry. Uh once again, Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yes.
Council President Feliciano.
Yes.
Motion carried. Ordinance 24 dash 49, ordinance providing for, providing for and establishing procedures for executive sessions of city council.
Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
So those moved by?
Williams.
And the second was?
Edwards.
Thank you. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards.
Yes.
Vice President Figueroa Katzenberg. Councilwoman Frisbee. Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Council, Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. And Madam President, we did have one proposed ordinance that was put on the docket that that ordinance will take place for second reading in August due to fishing notice. So that will be twenty-four, oh, four, one, and that will be heard in August.
Thank you.
That being, go ahead.
Yes. Can I go back to my vote? And I want to say no to forty-nine. I'm sorry, because I was just thinking we was going into, like, voting to go into executive session.
Okay.
Okay.
I know it's probably not going to make a difference, but I want to say no.
So that was a no. Understood.
Thank you.
YG, no.
For me, for forty-nine? I don't want to say no, but I do want abstained till we get more information.
So let me say this then. So let me say this, because I did forward all council the explanation of this that Mr. Koloji had created for us because we did not have it. It was not by request. It was by Mr. Koloji's suggestion in order to help things make sense for us. So Mr. Koloji, could you explain to council the purpose of twenty-four, forty-nine with the rules of executive session?
Up until this point, we've never had anything codified in a resolution or an ordinance about executive session. We've had numerous questions over the years, and they were answered by emails, but in the way of emails by the attorneys, et cetera. And in reviewing, you know, as part of our ongoing process to try to get things up to date, we thought it would be prudent to put in writing the procedures for going into executive session, the purpose, et cetera, for the benefit of the council, but certainly for the benefit of the public. And all we did was basically codify and put in writing the procedures that we've been following for the last several years. And the reason, obviously, we want to do that is to make sure that down the road, there's not an issue or a question or a deviation. Now we've got something very specific and clear to look at, and it tells, every council person can bring up a matter in executive session. They advise the council president, and as long as it's something that we're able to go into executive session for, they will be able to bring it up there. If it involves a personnel matter, they will contact the city clerk and ensure that the individual is sent what's called a Rice Notice that follows an old court case, Rice versus Union County Regional High School Board of Education, which means you have to put somebody on notice that you're going to talk about them and it's in executive session so they can exercise the right to have the discussion moved to public session. But other than that, I think it's going to go very well, and I think it's something that's going to benefit the entire council as a body. And, you know, I would certainly hope they would see fit to go with this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. And basically, it prohibits anyone from stopping a council person if you wanted to discuss something in executive session. It doesn't stop it. You can talk about it. So this is not anything to take anything from anyone. If anything, it just opens it up to say if someone has an issue that they would like to have discussed in executive session, then you can move that forward for us to go ahead and for us to do that. That being said, can we do the roll call again on the vote? I mean, if y'all want to say no?
Madam President, if you want to ask for a motion for reconsideration of?
Yes, can I have a motion for reconsideration of that?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Koloji, for that explanation as well.
And with that being said, motion for reconsideration, I'll defer to Mr. Koloji. Do I need a motion for the, for the vote? Certainly. Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettinburg? Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
I still just have reservations because I don't understand why we have to have it in writing if we've already been doing it. And that's where, like, I was a little confused about. So I'm just, I'm still going to say no.
I believe this is just for reconsideration. Right, this is just?
Oh, so because reconsider, oh, sorry, yes, yes.
This would be enabling you to change your vote if needed. There you go. So that's a yes. Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now we'll ask for a motion to approve?
Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Abstained.
Noted. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
I'm going to say no.
Noted as well. Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
I believe that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that being said, Madam President, I believe there is a matter of executive session to, oh, no, I'm sorry. We have some walk-on resolutions to be considered. Madam President, I can read those by, I can read those by title, and if you want to vote on those via roll call? Certainly. Resolution twenty-four dash three, oh, three, resolution authorizing payment to Chubb Insurance of New Jersey, five hundred Ross Street. I guess that's I fifty-four, oh, four, five, five, Pittsburgh, P.A., one, five, six, two, dash, zero, 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 one, for a property insurance premium from July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five in an amount not to exceed five hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred and six dollars.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-four dash three, oh, four, resolution authorizing premium payment to Linden Southern Insurance Company for workers' compensation buffer insurance from July first, twenty twenty-four to July first, twenty twenty-five in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and seventy thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars.
Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Council President, I have a question?
Yes.
So I'd like to ask Mr. Cruz, if you can say, when we, particularly for workers' comp, when we decide one insurance company over another or one premium level versus another, how is that process worked out? And how do we make that decision? Because that's different than the lowest bidder on a bulldozer.
But, Madam President, may I?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Adam Cruz, Business Administrator. Madam President, the, the way it works is that we hire a broker, and the broker goes out, gets price quotes, and then comes back to the administration and informed what are the prices, what are the increases from the previous years. This year is actually, it was a very moderate compared to the last few years in increase. I guess because of COVID and all these other factors that were playing for the last three years, we saw a huge increase the year before and then last year, but then this year it was extremely, extremely moderate. And, you know, we favor the same company that we had in the previous year.
So then?
So it is, so it is the broker that does the finding for us.
Okay, so it might be better coverage, but it also might be a higher rate, so we're not necessarily going with the lowest rated?
Can you repeat that again?
As far, as far as for the insurance premium cost to the city, we're not necessarily going with an insurance company that's offering us the lowest rate?
That is correct. Yes, yes. And, and don't forget, there are many insurance companies in the United States, but there are only few insurance companies that take on heavy liability from various different municipalities. Not all insurance companies bid for the City of Trenton. There may be only a few. And then there may be other suburban municipalities that get other insurance companies. It's all about liability.
And if we have much more, say, if we have a very well-known to have a safe working environment across departments, theoretically, that would lower our rate attract more companies?
Yes. And so when it comes to the safety for employees and everything, we even have a safety committee meeting, and we meet every month to discuss all of the injuries of that month per department. And so that also is very helpful to identify what are the factors that are actually affecting employees and, you know, injuries. And so they also partake in the, in the meetings in the month as well, every month.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Resolution twenty-four dash three, oh, five, resolution authorizing the application and acceptance of a grant, of grant funds from New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for anti-violence out of the school fiscal year twenty twenty-four, legislative grant application number twenty twenty-four dash zero, five, one, six, three, dash, zero, five, two, three, youth anti-violence initiative in the amount of two million dollars.
I don't have that.
Neither do I.
I don't have that either.
It's provided to me just now by Mr. Cruz. I truly can't confirm to you whether this has been circulated prior to this point.
It was factually delivered at the clerk's office, and that is actually my copy.
It is his copy. I'm not going to lie to you. I just couldn't confirm. It's been a long meeting.
Yes, it was delivered to the clerk's office along with a copy for each council person.
Was it now? Okay.
Okay, so here's what we need. Listen, so here's the thing, right? Is grant money's coming in to us. So, I mean, I personally don't have a problem with that. However, when we're, when we're doing what we're doing and taking in our documents and everything, I just would prefer that we just receive it so that we can see it prior, so that we're not caught off the fly with it. Ms. Cruz?
Yes, Madam President, Adam Cruz, Business Administrator. And this is actually something that we must adopt today. It's because of the timeframe, and the resolution has to be adopted today. If it's not, then we lose on the opportunity of getting this money.
And can you just tell us, what is this money for? Again, it's two million dollars. Just tell us what this is, what this is going to do. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve Wilson, Police Director. It's for something that you're all going to hate. This is for street teams. This is our street teams money. So one point three million goes to Police Department, seven hundred goes to the Health Department. So this is for next year's street teams.
For the street team, for the Trenton Community Street Team?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
I just want to verify the, the funding sources again, who for the grant?
Comes from the DCA.
DCA.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions before he sits down? Yes, Councilwoman Frisbee?
So you said it's for the Trenton Community Street Team. Is that the only street team that we are, that's funding is going towards with this?
Yes, Pastor Boyer Street Team gets its separate funding. And his funding came from?
AG.
The AG's office. Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Garcia?
Certainly. And just for the record, Madam President, it looks like we had two out of three here, but we can't confirm the third. If it was brought down, we do apologize. Once again, we have a motion to, I'm sorry, we have a motion to approve?
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Noted, roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, Madam President, with that being said, I don't believe there are any other items on the agenda?
May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Edwards?
Yes.
Vice President Figaro Kettinburg?
Yes.
Councilwoman Frisbee?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Council President Feliciano, motion carried. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I didn't vote?
Oops.
Yes.
Go ahead.
And no motion, and no action's going to be taken?
Thank you. Motion carried. I apologize.
[inaudible]